It's recording.
Good evening. Now, time is 7:01. Let me call to order the official workshop between Town Council and Planning and Zoning for Wednesday, December 11th. For the record, our council member, Seckser, council member Allen, with six of the seven percent, we have... Commissioner Price?
Uh, please. For the record, 7:01 is the time, the PNC meeting for December 11th, 2019. It's called to order. Commissioners Okafor, Burton, and Sandler are absent, but we have four. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Price. So, for tonight, let me... I want to thank everyone of the citizens and the applicants who are here. Thanks for your time, thanks for your interest, thanks for all the reports and feedbacks and emails and communications, all the time. So, let me give a quick idea about the plan for tonight. Some of you might already be in there, if not, the first item will be a staff presentation on the background of the case. And I believe staff will also attempt to talk about the process, the development process that we need to follow, because there are questions about water, fire, and what type of... how do we make sure that the new development has enough of all those amenities, all the requirements. So, staff will talk about that. Then, presentation of options by Hillwood, the applicant. That will be followed by questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding Hillwood's presentation, and followed by council questions. And then, we will open up the forum for public comments. Couple of things, there are sign sheets right outside the door. If you are here to speak to the council about this agenda item, I'm going to ask you to sign your name and turn it into our town secretary, Rachel Ramsey, here on the left, and she will intend that, send that to me, and I will use that card to invite the public to come forward and speak to the council. I'm also going to ask, with a large number of people being present, I'm going to ask that we limit your comments to three minutes per each speaker. Ms. Ramsey will keep the time, and upon two minutes, she will notify you, say that there's one minute left, and I ask that you respect that three minutes' time in making your comments. After the public comments, after the PNC and the council get to here and listen to various perspectives, which probably have not considered, it'll be time for planning and zoning and Town Council discussions. After that seven, item will be discussed and considered, and act upon providing a direction to Hillwood. To be sure, to be clear, this is not a vote on the zoning case. That will come in the next PNC and the following council meetings. After that, we'll have to... So, you can remind me one more time, if you are here to speak to the council, please fill in this form, and we will use that card for record keeping, as well as to invite each one of you to come and speak with the council. With that, I'm going to vote into the item one, that is, presentation by staff of background of case. Hold that thing.
Left.
Right.
Sorry, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, as you mentioned, there had been some questions brought up by the public in previous sessions regarding this development, and in an effort to try to get some of those questions answered clearly, I wanted, we wanted to put this together to give, to give information regarding the questions asked. So, that having been said, the first thing I'd like to just briefly discuss is the water capacity of the infrastructure serving this site. Right now, today, there is a 16-inch town water line in Town East Boulevard between the Water Tower and Jobson Road, which would encompass the entire front edge of the Lupton Track. In addition, there is an existing 6-inch water line in Barnes Bridge Road. The developer would be connecting to these water lines as part of the project. The 16-inch line being, of course, the larger system and closer to the Water Tower, that would be essentially the main source of water for the development. In addition, we will be providing a connection to the line in Barnes Bridge Road. That way, you have a good overall network. If you don't make that connection to Barnes Bridge, you run the risk of contamination issues and lack of chlorination. So, it's just a better system to connect to Barnes Bridge. Given the size of 16-inch water line, its proximity to the Water Tower, and taking into account the already existing resident, excuse me, residential development in the area, this is projected to have more than adequate water supply to adequately serve this development, regardless of the final form to which it takes. And then, just as an ancillary benefit, because we are making that connection to that 6-inch line in Barnes Bridge, that would increase the water pressure and, and be a better system for the existing residences in Barnes Bridge as well. So, what it boils down to is there is plenty of water to serve the track. The next issue is sanitary sewer capacity. Right now, today, there is an existing town water, excuse me, sewer main that flows from south to north through the area of the Lupton Track. The size of it varies between 10 inches and 15 inches as you move downstream. Thank you. And, right now, the line essentially serves the majority of the Homestead development. It does have excess capacity. When this line was put in, it was, the plan was taken into account that eventually there would be some sort of development, so you wanted to put in a line that was large enough to serve the development. That line directly ties into the City of Garland trunk line that's existing in place in Duck Creek. The question had been previously raised as to whether the Town's agreement with the City of Garland would allow for this connection, this additional flow. I've gone back and pulled the agreement, and it does account for that. Essentially, it accounts for any development within Sunnyvale that's in the natural area that drains to that location, which would include the Lupton Track, does have the right to flow to that channel, excuse me, rather, that line. We simply have to notify the City of Garland prior to making the connections, just to let them know that it's coming. But they don't have any, any ground understanding to not allow it to happen. Because the treatment plant and that existing line is very large and such a very large area, the additional flow from the Lupton Track will not be a significant increase of what's going in that line, so we do not anticipate any kind of issues with getting sewer service. So, again, just with water, we have adequate sewer infrastructure in place. Moving along to the drainage and floodplain issues, again, there had been some concerns raised in this regard, as, as I know everybody here is already aware, part of the proposed area is within the FEMA map to 100-year floodplain of Duck Creek. There are also, of course, smaller streams that traverse the site. Those don't show up on the FEMA map, because FEMA only maps streams that have a certain minimum drainage area, but nevertheless, they do have floodplains associated with them. And as part of the engineering design process, they will have to do a flood study. It would have to be submitted to the Town first, and then, depending on, depending on the results of the flood study, it may or may not have to be submitted to FEMA. We'll have to look at it to make that determination when it's turned in to the Town. But, we will have to approve the flood study before any plans are released for construction. And again, as I stated here, in addition to looking at just the actual Lupton Track part bit, they will be required to look at properties both upstream and downstream, which is pretty standard, really, for a flood study of this nature. Just a few details of what we're going to be requiring this flood study to show. No increase in 100-year flood levels on the property, or on any upstream or downstream adjacent properties. No negative impact on the storm sewer and drainage ditch capacities in nearby streets. Also, no negative impacts to the existing bridge, Duck Creek, Barnes Bridge Road. No significant increase in flow velocities in addition to flow levels. This is important, because of course, increased velocities can and does result in increased erosion, so that's certainly something that has to be looked at. And again, a flood study normally shows that data anyway. All post-Homestead development will be two feet minimum above calculated 100-year flow levels. This being the case, no home within the development, once it's built, would be required to carry flood insurance according to FEMA's requirements. As I say here, mortgage lenders do have the discretion to require flood insurance regardless, but in my 20 years of floodplain management experience, I've, what mortgage companies almost always just follow whatever FEMA says and beat the big. Let's see, and as I say, the study for the Town has to review all the streams within the development. FEMA will only look at Duck Creek proper, because that's the only one that shows up on their flood insurance rate maps. It's not advancing here. There it is. All right. If the development plan warrants, and again, we'll have to, we'll have to see what the flood study shows out once it's submitted. If this flood study has, meets the minimum threshold in terms of any kind of alterations, then would be required to submit for a conditional letter of map provision of FEMA. Basically, the conditional letter of map provision is something that has to be turned in prior to any home building permits, and essentially, it states that, that the projected development does not violate their floodplain regulations, no increase in 100-year flood elevations, so on and so forth. FEMA will not approve that disclaimer until they've received certification from the Town where approved of it. And then, once the clombers approve, then after they have proceeded with the construction, the grading essentially is done, they have to submit a follow-up to FEMA for a final letter of map provision, basically stating essentially that they built it per the plan, or if any alterations were made to account for those alterations. That's essentially the final statement from FEMA, that everything is, everything is in order, and then flood insurance rate maps would be revised, however is appropriate, to reflect the subdivision as it's, as it proceeds to its final form. And as I say here, all flood studies are required to use the existing effective models of Duck Creek that are, you know, available from FEMA for the developers' use. That way, they are using the official FEMA map, and there is no question of their, of their accuracy or of their applicability to the site. I did briefly want to talk about the issue of Waters of the U.S., which essentially is wetlands, wetlands concern. As I say here, they're also going to have to do a Waters of the U.S. study to identify any existing wetlands areas on-site. I say here the wetlands areas are hands-off for development, and what I mean by that is they, they can't just go wholesale and, and just completely take out a lot of wetlands without doing a very long involved individual permit from the Corps of Engineers. My understanding of that is not the anticipation, and I don't see where we would allow that to happen. That having been said, there is a nationwide permit in place for the Corps of Engineers for very small, very minor encroachments. Again, nothing really out of the ordinary in terms of development that are in relation to wetlands areas. And they will be mapped in show on project plans, so they'll have opportunity to review and comment on any, any wetland encroachments that may be as part of the plan. Rashad, would you like to talk about the zoning density issues?
Yes, sir. As you know, the staff was asked to provide some clarity with regard to current zoning and density. The current zoning for the property is SF2, and a small sliver of the property on the west side is SF3. The majority of the property that is being redesignated with this, with this proposal is SF2, and the density for SF2 zoning district is .8 dwelling units per acre. And, there was some confusion noted and explained to me with regard to the minimum lot size for SF2. A minimum lot size is just that, it's just for the lots, specifically for the lot dimensions. With regard to density, the density applies to the entire property. So, it's the entire, entire acreage divided by that number will tell you the maximum number of lots that are allowed for the property. The proposed zoning, as I noted, and will be explained further by Hillwood here in a minute, is SF2. They will use this as their underlying base zoning district for the development. This has changed. The initial proposal was using SF4. They feel, so this is a better proposal with regard to moving forward as, with the new proposal is SF2, is the zoning district. With that noted, the number of lots being proposed will consist of 438 lots, based on what I explained earlier. Just for clarity, also, the town densities noted, a town planner, Eric Arnhill, noted some of the densities throughout the town for our subdivisions, including the floodplain and not including the floodplain. There were some, some comments with regard to the densities using the floodplain for certain projects. I will note, in our research, the old definition and our old zoning ordinance actually allowed for the use of floodplain, or, and that is not out of the norm. You can, as Lyle just explained, you can reclaim floodplain through the FEMA process. The thing that you can't touch is the floodway. And Lyle could probably explain that in a little bit more detail than I can, but, noting that, a lot of these properties that are noted on this chart here use the floodplain, and where they needed to reclaim, they did, and where they didn't have to, or some projects didn't have floodplain in their project, they didn't have to deal with that. And this is just provided for additional information.
Thank you, Rashad. Before I move on to traffic, did you all have any questions about the floodplain issues that Rashad mentioned? All right. I'd like to just briefly talk on some of the issues related to traffic in and nearby this development. Going back to the previous development that had, that was submitted to the Town relatively recently, the developer did produce a traffic impact analysis, looking at the existing traffic patterns in the nearby streets, and then taking into account the projected impact from the development as was submitted at that time. We had reviewed the traffic impact analysis, and we'd had a little bit of back and forth till we eventually had finalized it. Depending on how the final layout of this property ends up, obviously, the traffic impact analysis would need to be revised and adjusted to take that into account, and then they would be resubmitting that traffic impact analysis to the Town when it's ready. And then, the final PD ordinance that ends up being drafted and finalized to sort of govern how this site develops, takes the traffic impact analysis into account and makes requirements and recommendations as needed in order to, to satisfy and to make sure that the public safety is kept in mind as this thing moves forward. But, so, essentially, the traffic impact analysis is a snapshot of what's out there now and what we can expect to happen, and then the PD ordinance will actually involve any, any changes or any governing requirements of the development as it moves forward. So, I just wanted to clarify what the TIA is versus what's going to go in the PD ordinance, which are the results and recommendations of the TIA. And if, and we, in fact, in the previous, in the previous layout, the developer had actually gone above and beyond what the minimum requirements suggested by the TIA were in terms of deceleration lanes and things of that nature. So, so we are taking that into account and being very aggressive in making sure that the interests of the public are served as they use these streets. Just a couple of the specific items. The first thing I wanted to just briefly talk about is access to Barnes Bridge Road. I know there is still an outstanding question that has not been finally resolved yet of just exactly what form the access onto Barnes Bridge Road is to take. Is it going to be just a straight full access, a gated access with exit only for the residents, or just something for strictly emergency, first responder vehicles only? Whatever that ends up being, of course, the traffic impact analysis and the PD ordinance will be appropriate to wherever that result is. And again, as I say, if the, if the impact analysis, if it indicates that we need improvements at the intersection of Barnes Bridge, not the overall street, mind just right there at the intersection, we would include the appropriate items in the PD ordinance. And just one other thing I would want to mention is, you know, in addition to what we can expect from this development, the TIA also looks at other future projected developments, not only in the northern part of Sunnyvale, but southern Garland, city of Dallas, other upcoming developments that can be expected to use Barnes Bridge roads. We have to take all of that into account and sort of take a holistic look at it to really adequately model what we expect to happen out here. Then, looking at the Town East Boulevard access, the term development plan does indicate two points of access to Town East. I know there have been some adjustments made to exactly where those points of access are going to actually hit Town East. They were selected with an infrared safe visibility for traffic entering and exit Town East Boulevard. We also need to look at, not only just getting onto Town East, we need to look at the impacts of turning movements from other streets, such as Mitchell Drive, for example, and there are some existing residential driveways that access Town East. So, all that has to be taken into account to get the safest possible locations, and then, in order to try to satisfy the public's concerns about these access. And as I, as I stated here, I know there is concern about increase in traffic on Mitchell Drive as a result of this development. While I cannot guarantee that there would not be any additional traffic on Mitchell Drive once this project comes in, we do understand that that is a concern, and I have sent information to concerned homeowners within the Homestead about the possibility of putting speed humps, or another similar traffic control device, in accordance with the traffic control policy that was recently approved earlier this year by council. And then, just one last thing I just wanted to briefly mention, and Susan, I don't know if you wanted to speak more to this, but we do have a letter from the Sunnyvale ISD regarding concerns of the impact of projected students onto the SISD facilities. Susan, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Lyle. And again, we're just trying to clarify questions that were asked of us in the last process, so we can kind of answer them before each person gets up and speaks and asks them again. So, I did unsolicited get a letter from Chuck Williams. I passed this out to the members that are here, but for the benefit of the audience. I'll read this real quick. "There has been a lot of discussion relating to the impact of the proposed Lupton Farm development. We'll have an enrollment at Sunnyvale ISD. Chuck Williams says, 'I have listed below the facts used in our district's long-term planning. This is written to provide clear definition on the impact for the district.'" Can you all hear me okay? "The enrollment projection study conducted by Templeton Demographics in January 2016 accounts for homes to be built in the Lupton Farm Track. The information regarding the number of homes to be built in this development were provided by the Town of Sunnyvale. The study reflects a total of 615 homes to be built in this development. Based on historical data from the Homestead development, assumptions can be made that a factor of .8 students per home would be anticipated for enrollment purposes. Therefore, it was projected that the district would enroll 492 students from this development. It is my understanding that a portion of the development calls for age-restricted homes. The developers assume that this will reduce the overall enrollment to some degree. However, the district will be impacted due to a state law known as the grandparent policy. Under this law, residents that provide substantial after-school childcare may sign an affidavit that allows for their grandchildren's admission into the district. Based on the district's current enrollment, I would not anticipate a similar .8 students-per-home ratio under the grandparents' policy. There is a reasonable expectation that some new residents may purchase an age-restricted home in order to allow for their grandchildren to gain admission into our district. It should be noted that the study reflected use of 800 acres for the development and the density in place at that time. It is my understanding that the current proposal being reviewed is a development of 547 acres with higher density. One question that exists is that the remaining 253 acres would not have been accounted for in the January 2016 enrollment study." So, that was the response from the school district, but also our attorney, Brenda. We had asked her to research, is there any way that deed restrictions can prohibit the grandparent rule from being in effect? So, I'm going to turn it over to her.
So, the answer is yes and no. So, to the extent that the state has allowed grandparents to, who keep children after school and are their primary caregivers, to attend school, the developer cannot override that rule. However, senior housing is an exception to the Federal House Housing Act, and the developer of senior housing may establish rules that within the development, occupants in the age-restricted area are not allowed to provide care for children within the development. And so, if there are no grandchildren or no children, then the grandparent rule would not apply. And the developer has the ability to establish its own rules for the way that children will be accommodated within the development.
So, I believe that's the end of the materials that we had prepared in, in response to questions that were closed during the last meeting. So, Mayor, I was trying to back over to you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Leave it up there.
Staff, thank you very much. Lady, the discussion, it took a little bit, answered a lot of these mic questions. Moving on to second item, that's the presentation by Hillwood.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council members, members of the commission. Thank you for taking time out tonight to, to talk through this. My name is Brian Karlock, Senior Vice President, Hillwood Communities, 3,000 Turtle Creek Boulevard of Dallas, Texas. Again, we're here tonight, we're passing out, by the way, full presentations. Some of the things that we're going to talk about are a little bit granular and maybe too limited to happen in front of you. Here's what we wanted to get through, and I will tell you, our objective is to get through fairly quickly this conversation, to be able to really have a real dialogue. We really want this to be a workshop. In that spirit, we're going to present really a couple of different options, three to be specific, that we think are all, all have merit and are viable. A lot of it will come down to the preferences of, of the council or ownership of the Town. So, I want to get through this relatively quickly. There are some things I really want to pause and take time on and talk about a little bit more in detail to fully understand what we're doing here and what we're proposing. I did want to start at this. This is within your UDO. So, we've done a lot of talking, by the way, but maybe the charge coming back from the last time we met was gain more input. You've heard what the public has said, at least at the podium. We've had several sessions before that, of course, with the Homestead and some other folks. We've had several meetings after we were charged to go back and maybe revise and come up with a different plan. We've heard from a few people, the comments, both at the podium and otherwise, like, just stick with the UDO. The UDO is here for a reason. Stick with the UDO. We've dealt with a very good UDO. I think what they mean too is stick with straight zoning. But I did just want to remind maybe everybody here that within the UDO, to say stick with the UDO, there is a special provision, of course, allowing for planned development. And if you look through it, I just kind of cropped out the section from your UDO that talks about the reason and maybe the place for PD. And we really think that this property is the place and the reason there is a provision for the PD. You can look through it, but the reasons for, for doing it is when you want to do master planning, carry out a specific plan, goal in the comprehensive plan, a traditional neighborhood with a variety of housing types, which is what you'll see, what you have seen, and you'll see some more of that tonight. And really, as much as anything, is the uniqueness of this property, and it speaks to it in item D, to preserve natural features, open spaces, and other topographic features of the land. I think it cut off, but it talks about, you know, where straight current zoning may not be appropriate. So, really, to those who, who maybe don't do this a lot, there are other ways to develop other than straight zoning. Having a PD is not uncommon as a Town for these various reasons. There just may be a better way to do it than straight zoning, and certainly a different way. And that's what we're here to talk about. Cutting the chase a little bit here is what you'll see and we'll talk through are really the major modifications that we've made since the last time we spoke, and I just want to go through them. You'll see these resonate throughout the three different options that we'll talk about tonight. One is, and maybe the most important, reduce the overall unit count by 30% to be in line with the current zoning of SF2, which is 438 units. That's the .8 units per, that's what Rashad and staff may have mentioned when they were briefing you on what is their current zoning, what are the current expectations of units of the site. So, we're gonna start there. Lots of things push and pull from that point, but that is what we think is probably maybe the most relevant. The comments that we heard from both you, the commission, residents, was they're just not comfortable with the previously proposed 626 lots. It exceeded the density, maybe, in It exceeded the density, maybe at least in a lot of people's mind, about what should happen here on the Lupton Track. So we're at 438 lots, which is .8 units per acre. From the last time we spoke, we've increased all the proposed lot sizes and we've increased the minimum home sizes. We've eliminated really any floodplain reclamation. Certainly good background, appreciate viable background on what you can and can't do in the floodplain. Our previously submitted plan had a fair amount of reclamation in the floodplain, which we all can do, as we know, you can do it. We've heard comments about drainage concerns, flooding concerns that may have historically plagued some of this part of town. We know you can do floodplain reclamation and do it responsibly, and you proved to both FEMA and your city engineer that it can be done without causing harm. What we're doing, we're setting that topic aside and said we're not going to reclaim any of the Duck Creek floodplain. So previously we were, and so we're not now. We've increased setbacks even further beyond the setbacks that were proposed, both on Town East and Barnes Bridge. We're proposing that Barnes Bridge be an emergency access-only gate condition. We realigned the main road not to line up with Mitchell Drive, which previous plan did. There were some thoughts and some consideration that it may add to an existing traffic issue on Mitchell, as it's a cut through, many treat it as a cut through. So we've taken some recommendations, we've run it through your town engineer on where that location is, and there's a location selected that moves it to the east and offset from Mitchell. And lastly, we redesigned the main spine road through the project to be maybe even more in line with the rule characters, a divided road, barge, no curve and gutters, but really it will show some imagery here too that speaks to that. So really, in our minds, there's several other tweaks and things, but these are the things that really are a direct response to maybe some of the criticism and the pushback and maybe what certainly convinced us that the plan as proposed before wasn't going to go any further. So I'm excited to talk about some of these options. Did want to just spend a few minutes on some slides here. Again, these are our guiding thoughts, these are our guiding principles. This is idea of development, conservation, and preservation. We do believe preserving a tree is infinitely better than planting a small tree. Both are important, of course, in the life cycle, but we think it is important to consider open spaces and trees, particularly on this property. Again, imagery does very well, some are from the property, some are not, but very much could be the property, very unique, unique even to Sunnyvale, certainly unique to North Texas. We'll see trail for a big part of our proposal before, certainly a big part of the proposal now, is that we have these publicly open trails and open spaces. So going back to this rule divided section, just a sample layout on the right for one of our options, but on the left is just some imagery. Previously, it was a pretty traditional, it previously was a curved gutter, which is a section approved in your development guidelines. There's also allowances to do this little rule section. I don't think modular works, but for those of you who can see it, there's a major spine road that takes you from Town East Boulevard through the property, through the green belt in the middle of the property, and just to the other side. That's what we consider our major spine road. We think it would be certainly enhanced rule character, which is a word we hear often in conversation with folks here in Sunnyvale, and we're trying to respond to that. We think this would be a nice touch, taking us down maybe a little more of a rule section rule field. So into the development options. Here's site 547 acres. Previously submitted plan, you'll see all the slides that we're about to talk about have the exact same format. So if you're looking to where the density of the lot count, trails, it's always in the same spot. On the slide deck, the bottom left is always a matrix of the proposed lot mix. So just as a reminder, we proposed 626 lots in the previous plan, which is the 1.1 units per acre. The lot mix, as you see in the bottom left, was a combination of, if you divide up the 626 lots, 350 of those were active adults, so age-restricted, which carry with them a smaller lot size. We were proposing two different lot sizes, 7150 and 8450 square foot lots. Then we have what we call traditional. So we use the term traditional to mean just not active adults. So traditional is really everything else going on within your town. And we were proposing a range of lot sizes, 10,500 square foot lots up to 12,600 square foot. So this is the base plan. We put it up there as a benchmark, just to remember where we came from. Another option that we've heard and need to talk about is what we call this kind of current zoning, or just develop it per the UDO, straight zoning, no variances. This is a plan that we suggest that anybody could pick the property up, currently zoned as SF2, and could develop it within the guidelines we're about to talk about, with really not asking many questions of the city in terms of approvals, or here's what I want to do, will you let me do it? So I just wanted to highlight a few things, I want to make sure we don't misinterpret too much of the slide, but again, if you'll walk through it here, there's 547 acres, it is the same site. If you apply the .8 units per acre, you get the same 438 unit density allowable. When you get into the preserved open space, your ordinance requires for one acre per 50 units. So if you do the math on 438 lots, you end up with an obligation to provide 8.8 acres of open space, which is that number. Preserve tree canopy, there's really no requirement, but in our sample case here, just as an example, where we picked the 8.8 acre park, we happened to pick a place with some trees on it, just to say, probably somebody, at least anybody with, you know, any conscience surely is going to say subject threat. So you got three trees out there as preserve tree canopy, certainly no obligation for trails, and the product type as required, straight zoning, 1 acre lots. So this is an option. One thing that we'll talk about a little bit later midway through our discussions is the edge treatment. We think that's an important part of this discussion, is what do the edges look like? Town East, Barnes Bridge, adjacency to other uses, adjacency to other density types. So in this particular case, we really just put in what we think would be compliant, I think staff's approved, that this is agreed, that you could do this lotting plan. So we just drew some lots, these are all 1 acre lots, so it's compliant, minimum lots. So if you just take Town East, there's a variety of lots that really back all the way up. I believe there's a 25 foot setback off of Town East, 25 for 50, I can't remember what the minimum setback is, but it's something in that range of a setback off of Town East. But you largely get all those lots that back onto Town East. Certainly, you could wrap a series of 1 acre lots without any setback requirements to the southeast around those clusters of estates there. And if you look to the north, Barnes Bridge, all those sample lots, there's nine lots, they front on Barnes Bridge, allowable, the spacing's work for driveways. This could be done. The yellow is to represent just the development envelope, but because there, you know, really is no requirement to, sorry, there's no requirement on how and where you place those lots, you would just put in 438 1 acre lots if you could fit them on there. That would be, that would be what you could do. We use this also as a benchmark to say, this is not what we want to do, and I think if the folks who say just keep it straight zoning, I can't believe this is what really is wanted to be done with a property like the London Track, given its characteristics, trees, valleys, just the way, the way, the beauty of it, doesn't feel like that's the right way to treat this. So we're exploring some other options. That really is where the proposed plan originated from, was hey, can we do this a little bit differently? So we're going to put that one aside. I'm going to compare all these side by side in a minute, so you can just kind of see the positives and the negatives. Again, you'll see in every plan, I give a following slide that just kind of highlights the open space that you would get and the tree canopy. So this is the current zoning, fairly generalistic, no obligations to keep all those trees, so you have to assume that all the 1 acre lot owners impact the trees throughout the property. So option one, so we've talked about what we proposed, we've talked about straight zoning, so now we'll get into really just three options that we think may be aligned, maybe they respond to some of the comments that we've heard even after the past meetings. So this is a traditional only, meaning there are no active adults, there's no age-restricted as a part of this project, this option. So again, 547 lots, 48 units per acre, 438 lots. You're going to see that as a common theme throughout all of our options, we're sticking with the same density from SF2. From that, you start to see some variation. So we calculate the open space, the tree canopies, and the trails, and then this is new as well, it's kind of the product type. So you can see fundamentally, you see these same villages of lots shown in yellow. There are a few nuances which we think are important, and we'll talk about each one of the edge conditions in a moment. But if you look along Town East, you'll see the 500 and the 1825 callouts, that 500 represents that our main entry has been shifted 500 feet off of Mitchell to not line up with Mitchell, and hopefully that might help maybe some of these Mitchell traffic concerns. The buffer has increased from the previously submitted plan. In some places, it's 400 feet where we have some trees we'd really like to keep on the west side of Town East. To the right, it's increased to a 200 foot buffer. And to the north, you'll see now there's a 100 foot buffer off of Barnes Bridge. Other things to note in consideration of transitional densities and transitional zoning considerations. In light yellow, you'll see 1 acre lot conditions. So we're proposing that behind the Barnes Bridge, behind the 1 acre setback is a series of 1 acre lots along that strip. Also wrapping the other large acre lots to our southeast, you'll see there's the 1 acre clusters that should try to be responsive to our adjacent area. This is option number one. Traditional homes only. Again, I'll go back and forth, but you can see obviously considerable amount of open space, 224. I will mention though, the way we're using the scale to talk about open space and trees and tree canopy, we're not including the floodway at all. That is all going to the side. You're going to get, you're going to get the 118 acres of what ends up being open space and tree canopy. All the numbers you see above it are up and above. So this is that. So option two, so option one, traditional only, option two, similar to our proposed plan previously, this is a hybrid. This has active adult or age-restricted and traditional. Again, we're capping ourselves at the 438 units, it's just now how are we distributing the 438 units? The active adult, as we've talked about, if you look at the matrix on the bottom left, there's 300 of the 438 lots are active adults. We talked a little bit in our last meeting about there are some minimum thresholds of number of active adults to be able to really develop and operate and maintain really good world-class amenity centers that are private to the active adults. So that threshold number that we really just cannot go below, and we're trying to do a program that we would all be proud of as 300, the remaining lots that add up to the 438 are a range of those same traditional lots, ranging from 11,600 up to 15,000 square foot lots, all the way up to the 1 acre lots. So a few nuances here, as you see, because we introduced a little more dense product in form of the active adult, in exchange for that, you get more open space and we're able to actually increase buffers along, all the way around the edges. So again, I won't go back to compare things, but you get a little more buffer in certain areas, you can see, but if I will compare the open space and the tree canopy in a moment, but you actually get more open space and more trees in this particular program. We've kept the active adult up into the north side of the property, again, with the setback. In all these options, by the way, we do have a gated Town East gate, that's emergency access. We're certainly open to discuss that.
Barnes Bridge.
I'm sorry, Barnes Bridge, sorry. We're open, we're willing to do whatever we really need to do, the combination as we discussed, gated for emergency, gated for only private, private residents for whoever lives at Lupton, or leaving it open. Really looking for inputs certainly from the town at that point. Again, here, if you went back and forth, you would see actually even more open space. The last option to discuss is really an entire active adult community of 438 homes. The lot sizes in the lot left are the same active adult lot sizes that we've talked about, but because now all 438 are 7,800 and 9,100 square foot lots, again, in exchange, you get substantially more open space, you get more tree preservation in exchange really for that. Same really development odds, if you went around the edges and looked and we're talking about that again, you'll see even greater buffers. For example, off of Town East is now a 500 foot buffer, on the west part of it, a 450 foot buffer on the east, then up north on Barnes Bridge, you'll see a 300 foot buffer where previously it was a 100 foot buffer. And with that, this is the corresponding open space that goes with the plan. So again, I think it's important to take a little time, this is where it gets a little granular, but I think it's important to understand what we're trying to do and the importance of it and the considerations really in all of these plans, to try to keep really some of these things that are really important. We think the edge conditions, meaning Barnes Bridge and Town East, are very important. So we're going to take one by one, if that's okay. Barnes Bridge, this is a shot taken probably a few weeks ago by our drone image. You can see on the left, there's existing conditions, just to kind of reflect on the open space and where you have trees and where you don't have trees. In the middle is really those arrows are intended to be a replica of driveway. So if you did front on it per straight zoning, you'd have, we have about nine that we think would be compliant, nine homes that would front on Barnes Bridge. I think the impact on the tree canopy on the south side of Barnes Bridge may be implied, but it would certainly have a substantial impact. The image to the right just again shows those lots drawn in, about kind of what could be done under straight zoning if somebody chose to do it. So here's our options, we want to show a little bit how this would look in real time. We keep the one on the left up there as a base, that's kind of using current zoning, and you'll see the yellow, which is the development envelope, runs right up to Barnes Bridge, no, there's a minimal required setback, pretty negligible. Option one and option two, which are traditional and the hybrid, you'll see the setback there being proposed, protecting that really nice stand of trees on the south side. So 100 foot setback gets the development envelope, so those, that's right at the back of the lot. So those will be iron fences that are at the back of those lots, which would be in the yellow. We're also proposing a trail program. Some of the Barnes Bridge residents have expressed some interest maybe in giving people the ability to get off of Barnes Bridge, onto a safe patchage of a trail. So in this case, we're showing in the white line a trail that would meander through that open space, really kind of through the property, get you to that Duck Creek trail system safely. I think this would be really an amazing and a safe way to get people to Duck Creek and even those interior parts, which are going to be public. So in the option three, where again, that's all active adult, you can see the setback has got even bigger, up to 300 feet, allowing just more setback. The trail will still be there as well to get people to Duck Creek. So we'll switch to Town East Boulevard. Again, this is just a scenario of what's out there today and what existing zoning might allow. So you see the stand of trees that should be in consideration, there's a little lot of stock pond there on the west hand side. The yellow is the development envelope. So that's honoring the minimum setback required right now. It talks about 100 foot buffer from the property line. Town East will be expanded at some point, we think. If it is and when it is, the right of way will come out of the north side of Town East. So that 100 foot buffer, just by virtue of building the north lanes of Town East, will kind of shrink. But right now, just to the current property line, which goes to the edge of the concrete, you'll have about, somebody could have a 100 foot buffer. And you see the lots that we've shown there, you see a road that lines up with Mitchell, whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but that's kind of what somebody certainly could do. And then it shows a series of 1 acre lots, in this case, we back them to Town East. I think somebody could come to Town Council and ask for other curtsides along Town East that they want to front on Town East. We're just showing an example of it back. Contrast that with this, the left is the one we just talked about, the one in the middle, again, is the traditional and the hybrid option. You see substantial setback, 200 feet to the far east, it's actually kind of off the chart on the west side of Town East, the setback and the development envelope is even further than the screenshot captures. Option three, which is the all active adult, you can see that setback goes all the way back to 450 feet. So very substantial, we think. Last but not least is this consideration for the existing zoning of existing properties to our southeast, which are very large rural estates. Existing condition, no requirements to setback, of course, no, nor preserving trees along the edge to the extent they're on our property. And you can just see how you could do a 1 acre, a series of 1 acre lots that band their way around the edge. So contrast that with these options here, so the one on the left again is compliant with current zoning, just kind of backing all the way up to the bottom of our fence. Option one and two, traditional and hybrid. options. You can see the setbacks that we're proposing, even next to our neighbor, you'll see some 150-foot setbacks. That's also where, again, we propose the one-acre lots, just in sensitivity to that transitional zoning, is that we drop in one-acre lots around the edges. Option three, which is age restricted only, we're proposing using the extra land that we're able to kind of give back and put extra buffers even around that current, around the estate lots there. So you'll see the buffer and setback goes to 200 feet around the edges. Did you do that or I did?
Notice.
Okay. Okay, that's right. I didn't know my flicker was really working. So kind of in summary, if you just kind of look at the chart here, this is, this is a summary of all of them. I put this slide up kind of last at the end, so I don't know that it's not a bad thing to have up as we talk about options and the effect of that. But I just, a way is out here to show again consistency from current zoning all the way over option one, two, three, just the number of lots is consistent. You just start to see your variations and the amount of open space that's able to be provided as a direct relationship with which option that we're talking about. On the bottom again, you can see the proposed lot sizes within each scenario. One other thing, I mentioned it earlier, but I wanted to highlight is the floodplain reclamation, the bottom row. In previously submitted plan, we were reclaiming the floodplain, straight zoning. They can absolutely reclaim the floodplain. And all of our three options, we're agreeing that we will stay out of the Duck Creek floodplain and not develop it. So a few slides of the question of housing and product and quality, that certainly has kind of, so just wanted to be able to address this. We went through some of these slides with P&amp;Z, and we did not, as it turns out, when we spoke to Council last. But these are, we have two categories that we're talking about having options. You have traditional homes, of course, and you have active adult. So we're gonna go through just a series of slides for traditional. As we're going through these, we'll talk about one other thing that I would love feedback on, and that is discussion around garage doors and orientation. So the slides I'm gonna show you are actually builders that we are talking about building within our program. Dries, President of Dries, Texas, came and spoke to P&amp;Z, and we went through some of this a few weeks ago. These are products that would fit on our lot sizes that we proposed, up to 15,000 square foot lots and then one-acre lots. It's very possible that the one-acre lots are kind of more local custom builders, who's a pretty unique builder that builds on the one-acre lot. This is, we could expect this quality of product. We'll go through all the architecture. Hopefully you can see by just looking at it, there's a high level of quality in terms of stone and design. These are the people that we do business with. We do business with Dries all over the state of Texas. These homes probably range from 2,500 to 4,500 square feet. Price point, probably 400,000 to probably up to 7, 400,000, probably 700,000 is the price range that we're talking about, which is actually much higher than the average price point right now being sold in Sunnyvale. Again, another imagery, I'll go back here, we'll talk about it a couple of times through, but do note this is a three-car garage. You'll notice the cedar garage doors, which is an upgrade and well above standard. But that, the single garage door on this particular three-car garage faces forward. What this ends up doing is it allows you to have a three-car garage without putting all, we call it a snout, but the J swing. Some people do do product, and because they have to, based on your ordinance, they have to pile them all in that long J swing part of the garage, which basically means you have a three-car garage poking right out in front of the house. It probably isn't the best architecture, we think. The way, some of that's been accommodated through the market is this idea of your two-car garages are part of the swing and the J, and your third car comes straight in. And you'll see that throughout some of the slides. Here's another example of that product type. Just as a reminder, you really, you have no requirements right now for your garage door quality, largely aluminum is used. Some builders do upgrade. We've agreed that we'll do upgraded cedar throughout all of our homes. Again, really wasn't even on purpose, but this idea of the J swing, the three-car with the one-car garage facing forward is a pretty popular product plan. Most of these images came from Prosper Market. And again, not only is the outside of these homes amazing, certainly the inside is too. There's been some people who maybe made comments to me in some of our private sessions about you're gonna build junk, you're gonna build houses so fast, they're gonna fall down. Just, we've been around 30 years doing business this way, just this company's, whatever, 70s year of being in business. We don't operate that way. The people we do business with do not operate that way. We never stayed in business by doing that way. This is really high-class, world-class material and construction. Another builder, for example, Darlington Homes, similar product, again, you happen to see that three-car, the J swing and the single car forward. These are things that we are agreeing to, by the way, by development agreement. You're aware that the legislature really moved the ability for cities to enforce standards for materials. We're voluntarily allowing you to do that by entering into a development agreement. So you can do it by development agreement, you can't do it by zoning. So we're really trying not to take advantage of it, of that loophole by saying we're gonna memorialize all this masonry, architecture, garage quality in the form of a development agreement. So it's protected and we'll deal the horse to that. Last but not least is the age restricted. We did talk about this, I believe, in our previous meetings. These are, this product would be restricted to the two product types, the age restricted. It is a smaller lot, it is a smaller footprint, it is often very much more expensive per square foot. Just by nature, this buyer is willing to spend a lot more on the interior finish out. They kind of see it a lot of times as their forever home. So a lot of people think that small square footage means cheap. It's actually quite the opposite with this product and this particular buyer. The important thing for this product type and really this buyer is really the garage orientation and where it's built into the architecture. It is important, as you see in all these images. And as you know, we have the public workshop out in the Colony, sorry, the Colony, and we walked this product, and hopefully everybody came away from it knowing that this is a really high-quality product that I think anybody would be proud of living in. But the important thing is really the garage, you'd be able to go in and out. There's a demographic reason on why that's important, certainly because you're talking about 55 and up. I hope it's a 55 to 65, would have no problem, but maybe when you get to 80, I don't know. There is an issue with going in and out directly, which is important. As much as anything, though, the way the architecture works around these garage orientations, it allows the backyard to be preserved, which is a key part of the attractiveness of these active adult communities. It's just the ability to use your backyard, which alleys, of course, destroy generally backyard. If you do the drive-through and park in the back of the house, it really blows up your backyard. And because you're on relatively smaller lots, you've only got so much real estate to be able to navigate, your flat work, driveways and other things. So this is an important key feature. It's in our PD application. Hopefully we can come up with a plan that we agree is a good idea, but you'll see it in our next application too. It's just a fundamental. There aren't many things that are deal breakers. This is really an important key feature that we really have to have, and really our builder to build this product really has to have this key component. But we put conditions around it, of course. We have high-quality cedar doors, masonry requirements, architectural features around those doors. That was in the previous application and happy to keep it in there for sure, to the extent we ran an active adult plan. And again, the interior, high-quality finish out, exterior and the interior. So I've done my last two slides, I think. Just a little bit in summary, backing up to our comparison. Fundamentally, I feel like you've got these choices. I just want to feel like we have these choices. One is current zoning. Somebody comes in, the answer to anybody who wants to develop is that this is no variances, no consideration for doing anything different. Go straight down, straight zoning, don't do anything different. Fine. If you do, this is just kind of, excuse me, this is what you get as a response to it, or at least this is the minimum you have to assume you get from that particular development, or those things in S F two. To the right is really just a bunched together comparison of any of our options. And really, I think, I think the benefits are probably obvious, same number of lots, but when you get to open space, clearly going from eight acres, minimal obligation, to north of 200 in any of our options. Tree preservation, the old tree preservation, from really minimal to no requirements to guaranteed over 100 acres, often much higher than that. Trails, no requirements. We think public trails are 4.5 miles minimum throughout the public open spaces. This is really an amazing benefit to the residents, not just the people who would live in our community, but also the rest of Sunnyvale. Floodplain reclamation, obviously this particular developer, somebody did straight zoning, could reclaim. We're saying we won't at all. And the Duck Creek floodplain, then lot size, you got your one acres, and you can see the variation of lot sizes that would go with our three proposed options. Can you just hit one forward?
There it goes.
We don't, I put that at the end of the presentation if you want to come back and use it as a discussion point. Next slide. This is the last slide. So this is the direction that we're requesting tonight, at the end of the night, if you walk away with this, this is what we really need to be able to respond to any adjustments to our proposals. One is Barnes Bridge, how are we gonna treat that particular gate? What's your preference? Emergency restriction to the residents of Lupton or just open? Second one is just the alignment of Mitchell Road, because it is our spine road. It's important, it's a fundamental planning feature that we actually just know, is it better, we're proposing it now, or better back where we had it? And then the biggest thing of all is kind of option one, two, three, which one really speaks more for the preferences of Council. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Brian. Before we get into the primary mediator, the next item is questions from Planning and Zone Information. Before we get started, I want to remind the members of the audience, we put a new set of mics here, and these mics are very sensitive. So even small conversations in the audience get picked up. And also, the session is live stream. Just wanted to know, while I was speaking, this can be heard from many people here and possibly from other places, just FYI. With that, Commissioner, please, I'm going to...
For the direction for the P&amp;Z, if we could keep it, I'm sorry. For the direction for the P&amp;Z, if we could hold it to questions only and save comments until, I really wanted for the, I really would like to get to the public comments, and so I would like to do a, you know, traditional workshop.
Can you keep the mic in the phone for two?
Oh, sorry. I'm maybe I can hear. For the P&amp;Z, if we keep it to questions only for now, and then the traditional workshop, try to limit our statements, our statements, general comments, until we have all the public comments. So for the P&amp;Z, any questions for the Epcun or staff?
So I'll come back to your comments after the planning and zoning questions are done. We will come back to the audience comments after the P&amp;Z and the Council did discuss. We will get back to you.
So my question relates to the Barnes Bridge, I guess, discussion that we're gonna have on the exit and entrance. One of the options is to essentially make it emergency only. What is the traffic impact, if that's the case, on to Town East? Yes, I think you're up.
Clearly by gating that and not allowing either limited or no access to Barnes Bridge, it'll change traffic patterns. We've already revised and looked at the traffic impact analysis that was previously submitted to the town for approval. And we've looked at it. We're still finalizing the results, but the early, the early feedback is, and actually our engineers here tonight too, they can really speak more technically, but largely it didn't have much impact. It required maybe another turn lane on Town East, but there were very few additions to what we are proposing doing already to Town East. So it didn't change the classification by alphabet, right? It still kept it at a A.
Okay. And is there only one entrance off of Town East, or is there multiple?
There's two.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wasn't.
There's one to the west and then one to the east, divided by the green space, the big green space.
And then as far as the restricted to residents, is that the idea being that we restricted to residents exiting? And if so, how would that work?
Yeah. Well, these, some of these questions will be really to the town, how we want it to work. The idea of restricting it to residents, it could work one of two ways. One, it could be just, as if you look in the gated community, the only residents of Lupton have access, so they could come and go in or out, or it could be restricted one way or the other. So we're open to that idea. I think we're careful and we're sensitive about maybe Barnes Bridge impact. So we've really offered that, we're flexible on that.
And then I think earlier they mentioned with the school district concerns, obviously, with additional, possibly additional students that would be with grandparents, and that one of the options from our town attorney was that be developer and put in restrictions as far as caregiving for school-aged children. Is that something that you have considered?
Well, actually, first I heard about it was tonight, so we would take it certainly into consideration to see exactly what that, what that meant. We're open, I will tell you that, but we'll need to understand fully the impacts of that and liabilities of that. But we would certainly like to know more about that, Brenda, about that provision.
All right, sure.
I've got a question. Sir, I have a question. In some of our subdivisions here, there's homes are restricted to see-through wrought iron type fencing so that preserves the open space look and everything. Will the homeowners association have something like that for some of these lots?
Right. So in all our communities, we have a fencing standard that all our builders have to build by, or we're installing certain fencing as a developer. But the requirements will be placed, it'll be deed restricted upfront to comply with that plan. On a project like this, much like our central Texas projects, it'll be largely iron fence driven, just to preserve views. A lot of the plan, you'll see backs onto open spaces, and that's value. People, that's why people want to run places like that. So yeah, it would be, much, much of it would be, we'll have to look at every, I can't say everything would be iron fence, but I can't imagine it won't substantially be, around the edges for sure would be iron fence, really anywhere that backs up to an open space would be iron fence. Yes, you're good. Yeah. And again, to be clear, it's important that it's deed restricted so the HOA, long term, 30 years from now, can enforce both, that it stays in iron fence and that it stays in good condition.
Yeah, y'all would have to set the standards as the developer.
We do, and record those deed restrictions so that they're in place and it can't be moved even when, or revised, even after we leave. There are protections for the homeowners. Thank you.
So, okay. The rural divided barge that you talked about, the main spine, is that gonna be a concrete road or, I mean, it looks very natural.
Is it all concrete? Sorry, I'm quick to my engineer. If concrete's your standard, then it would be concrete. I think the images we used may have come out of Central Texas market, I'm not sure where we got them, but in Central Texas, they use a lot of asphalt.
It shows asphalt on that.
With ribbon, yeah, with ribbon edges. If, if, if concrete's the standard in Sunnyvale, it would look the same, just all concrete.
Okay. And then the trails in the age-related section, would those be public trails in the age-related section, or would they all only be private trails?
We're kind of keeping open the idea, we're keeping open the concept in whether or not the age restricted would want to be kind of fully gated and compliant for the age restricted or not. If it was restricted and gated only for them, then those, everything within the gate per se would be private. If it's open, which is really right now our inclination, based on the location, and particularly if you gate the Barnes Bridge, you can affect almost all the gated community just because of its proximity. You wouldn't gate it, it wouldn't be private. So if that was the case, then yes, all, everything within that age restricted, hi, would be, would be public.
One more question. You mentioned that there's no obligation to keep trees if you were to do the standard zoning. And I'm not sure if this is for you. Does, are tree ordinance not apply in this situation?
I'm gonna probably defer to staff on that, as I understand that the control mechanisms are very limited. Once you subdivide the property into one-acre lots, and you have to turn it over to the homeowner, there's limited controls, but I don't know that I can speak exactly to it.
Yeah, it is somewhat correct. Now, during the development process, you would have to do a tree preservation plan, but there are certain criteria that would allow you to remove... but there are certain criteria that would allow you to remove certain trees that aren't on exempt list. So I would say quite a few of the trees that are on the property would probably be exempt and those that you could, would remove can be mitigated. A lot of developers will put those in the spine road as a buffer. They will also, we also have a tree restoration fund where you could pay $150 per caliper inch and not even worry about mitigation. So what you show, it could be done, it could be costly, but it could be done.
Got it.
And but, but to address your comment about after the fact, if there's some trees on a lot, after it's platted, after it's been developed, a homeowner purchases it, if the lot is less than five acres, there's no requirement for treatment of mitigation. So yes.
Which is, what this example is.
Yeah, after the fact.
Question, question here. I believe Susan can answer. The Sunnyvale ISD study that Doug Williams offered up assumes 630, 615 homes at point eight, students present.
That's correct, that's what's in the letter.
So 600, so this proposal was 438 times point eight would be...
And that's if they did the traditional.
Right, if we follow traditional, but if we do some active adult...
The due lessons for learning this.
And no reclamation of floodplain?
That's what we're saying. Right now, there's a floodplain line that kind of follows the floodway along Duck Creek. Previous plan, if we showed it to you, we could compare it, we were claiming a portion of it for sure. We're saying now just to avoid any kind of concern by neighbors upstream, downstream, we're going to agree not to reclaim that.
The, okay, I want to go back to what you was just saying. So the school district though, looked at the entire Lupton property, right? So this is 438 on a portion of the property. So there is still parts of the property that haven't been developed or not being discussed that could be later developed and increase the number of homes, I mean, potentially. I'm not saying you would do it, I'm just saying that's potentially out there. I think that's what was in the letter even, that they can't really say exactly if this is a concern or not because it doesn't actually encompass the entire tract, which is what the study was done on, right?
That's correct, to know that, Mr. Halli, Mr. Halli.
Yeah, I think my understanding is that, and again, I didn't request that letter, so I need to probably double back with Doug to see exactly. Some of it was a little bit confusing, I thought. My understanding was 615 covered the Lupton own property we're purchasing. That's correct, so the remaining part of the property would be working under the limitation if we take on, if we take up 438, if we do all traditional, we do 438 units, then the rest of the property would be working under the limitation of whatever is left between that and 615, if that makes sense. And then unless the school district directs another study at a later date that proves differently, and that's under the traditional model, the numbers change, of course, with that.
So his letter, the way he lays out in the letter is that there's 253 acres unaccounted for. So if you use the point eight calculation, I mean, somebody who's better at math can do that on the plug, and it sounds like we're probably in the hunt for what the original assumptions were.
Yeah, 615.
Yeah, 615 divided by 100 is point eight, so if they maintain the same density, what they're developing, yes.
Yeah.
Isn't that, the school assumption is that?
I mean, we all figured out, it doesn't matter if this is based on density of acreage, that's not going to change.
Right.
So it's, the calculation was point eight for acreage. Acres won't change.
But I'm just saying, we just, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that the study itself was done on the whole lot.
Sure.
Just so it wasn't confusing that they had studied this exact scenario.
Okay, gotcha.
Because if it ends up they had studied just this property, then that would mean his conclusion was 615 homes on just this tract that we're talking about, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me since we're zoning this point eight times 547 acres. So I think his letter's not maybe perfectly clear, but my interpretation was that right now planning on 615 to the entire Lupton extensive property. We're obviously well under it, the remaining property would maybe have some encumbrances, but you're working up against a cap pending a further study by Bob Timms and Doug Williams.
And the point eight per house, household was based on homestead?
Yes, that's correct. What he says in the letter. Apologize, I don't know where my mic gone. Yeah, he says, the study reflects a total of 615 homes to build in this development, and that was assuming the entire development, all of the Lupton property. Based on historical data from the homestead development, assumptions can be made that a factor of point eight students per home could be anticipated for enrollment purposes. So that's the factor that they're using.
Any more questions for the P and Z? And Mary, let's return that over to you.
Is that it for the P and Z? I'm going to remind you again, citizens, if you walk, so if you'd like to talk, I'll go. Give us two more minutes. The council finished it, I'll come back to you. I'll ask you to fill up one of these files.
I don't have one, I apologize.
We'll get you one. So I'm going to turn it over to the council assistant, council assistant, I'm going to ask questions, questions to the developer or the staff. I'm going to ask that you, hold on to your position statement later, after we have a chance to listen to perspective from the citizens. With that, I'm going to open this for council questions.
I have a question for our engineer, Bob. With regards to the drainage and floodplain and the study that they have to provide.
Yes, sir.
It says there's no increase in the 100-year flood levels on the property.
Yes, sir.
Is the 100-year timeframe dictated by federal law, is it dictated by town ordinances? What determines that they have to meet the 100-year floodplain?
Well, it's really both, sir. FEMA uses the 100-year storm as a generally accepted guideline of what constitutes a baseline risk level. And the terminology is somewhat misleading, I mean, the terminology all comes down from the FEMA level, they're kind of the ultimate source of a lot of this, but what a 100-year flood basically means is it's a flood that you could expect to have 1% chance occurring in any given 12-month period. So theoretically, in a 100-year period, it's going to occur one time and that's kind of where the nomenclature comes from. As I say, FEMA has used that as a standard really for decades and so towns, states, other municipalities have just kind of adopted it just so everybody's kind of on the same page. So it's pretty standard, it's a pretty standard baseline.
Does the town have the, to require a more stringent regulation?
The way our ordinance is written now, it goes by the 100-year floodplain. That having been said, if you're referring to no increase in 100-year flood levels and the finished floor elevation of homes that would be expected to be constructed, we do have what's called minimum freeboard requirements. FEMA, if a home, if you want to build a home that's not in a floodplain, all FEMA requires is that, you know, the water can be, you know, one tenth of a foot below the finished floor of that home, or I should say below the foundation level of that home. Our minimum requirement is for an additional two-foot freeboard, so in addition to the FEMA requirements, the finished floor of any given home would be two feet above that. FEMA does allow towns and other municipalities to pretty much set whatever sort of minimum freeboard requirements they so desire and that's what is in place. And again, that's fairly standard and common for towns in this area. So it's not so much a higher frequency storm, it's just a sort of, everything's built up higher above what FEMA requires as a minimum.
I think you know what my interest is in here. You know, we don't agree on drainage floodplain issues. And this town has significant drainage issues. It's going to cost us a bit of money to fix them. Here's another development that's coming in and we're going to live by 100-year floodplain issue. My question is, can we make that more stringent? We want to answer tonight. Can we make it more stringent so we don't create the potential for the drainage issues that I believe have occurred because of new building, new development? I'll wait for the answer for that to be tonight.
I understand and if you would be willing to let me do a little research on that front, I'd be more than happy to get you a good response.
I'd like to make sure that not only is FEMA satisfied, because I don't really care about FEMA being satisfied, I care about the town of Sunnyvale being satisfied and the fact that there's going to be people downstream from this, as you well know, that do not need to have a potential for their houses being flooded. And we already have that issue with Stony Creek and this is going to drain right behind Stony Creek.
I understand, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments, Mr. Ray? See you again.
Rachel, could you go back to the slide that showed the various neighborhoods and the densities in those neighborhoods? It would have been in...
The city of town.
I think that was in the Lyles presentation. And where I'm heading here, you'll be a part of this somewhat to make sure this old ski country farmer was working his butt on his farm right. I'm looking at option one, two, or three. The numbers for option one, two, and three, and particularly the number for option one, there's 547 total acres. They're looking at putting 438 lots on that acreage and of course, that's where the point eight dwelling units per acre comes in there. The actuality is, is that they're not building on 547 acres, they're building on for option one, 547 minus 224. So you end up with an actual buildable density of .59 dwelling units per acre. And this is a problem with the way that our ordinances are written, our plans are written. And as part of the reason why this chart, I believe this was as a result of my asking, oh, wait a minute, we have nothing to compare what we're doing here to because the numbers can, numbers are what put people on the moon, but numbers can screw you up if you don't really think about what's going on. And I apologize for not having the 547 minus 224 number here, or maybe I do, but I put it somewhere else. But you end up at a .594 dwelling units per acre. So now when I look at this chart, are we now saying that this is, this is, I would believe that the chart that we're looking at here, to get an equivalent discussion of the actual density per acre, that would be the bottom line here. And there's not anything on that bottom line that's anywhere near .59 dwelling units per acre. The tightest density that we have is .65, unless I pushed my buttons wrong or had my thought processes wrong when I was doing my math. Can you speak to that or is that a little bit much to speak to?
Rashad, I don't know if you might want to weigh in on this particular issue.
I mean, I kind of understood what you were noting, but as far as previous developments, as we mentioned and Laun mentioned, floodplain can be reclaimed. So in many cases, those previous developments, when calculating their density, included areas that would be reclaimed. Case in point, the Stony Creek Phase 3B, 4B, 4C along Duck Creek, much of that was floodplain area and difficult to develop. Some of it was waters of the US, but the developer went through the appropriate processes and they're currently doing that now. And the density noted in the PD included all those areas that were, could be considered restrictive, but they went through the appropriate process to develop it accordingly.
Thank you, Rashad. Now, I apologize that I wasn't, didn't look like I was listening to you how it was, but...
No problem.
The mathematician corrected my numbers. It's one point. It is 1.35 when you do the math that I was just doing. But that throws it to the, almost to the other extreme, where I guess it really puts us into the area that's around all phases of homestead. You have 1.35. Okay. Now, second question, different area, have I confused everybody totally, which I apologize for doing. Second question though is, is the traffic impact analysis, is it done based on homes coming in only to Sunnyvale or is it done regionally? Because we have a great big plot of land right on the corner of Sunnyvale up by the power plant, that three of the four roads that are going to feed that development are Sunnyvale, for all intents and purposes, Sunnyvale roads. And primarily, Barnes Bridge is going to be the road that's going to have that traffic.
Right, and you're certainly quite correct in that statement and my answer would be that it is done regionally because we all understand it's not just what's in Sunnyvale opposite of the impact on the town's roads.
Thank you, and Rashad.
Let me ask one question on the same note. I don't know which presentation is, one of the presentations in reference to Barnes Bridge and Garland development. I don't want to be too loose, that means one. Can you, what's that Garland development, I mean, talking about the...
The, I believe what you're referring to, sir, when I had spoken about the traffic impact, and this also kind of speaks to what Mr. Bean just brought up a moment ago, because in addition to the Lupton tract, you know, we know, as you said, there is property, Southern Garland property in, I guess it's, you know, City of Dallas, right there at that intersection, that we know is going to come in and we know is going to take use of the town's roadways. And so that does have to be factored into any traffic impact analysis because otherwise it just isn't really a complete analysis.
Mr. Bean, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple as I'm going through the numbers here. So I see preserve, preserve open space of 237 acres, treaty canopy of 125. So those numbers are outside of the 547 that we're talking about for total acres. So my numbers have us down closer to about 210 to 215 acres being used. But Rashad, my question's basically back towards you. You had said that per UVO, that we can use total acreage of the entire development to go back and hit those numbers. Does it say anywhere in the UVO that we're required to use those numbers?
No. Now, I was noting the old ordinance, old zoning ordinance, had a definition for gross usable acres. It's noted up there on the screen now. And it stipulated certain areas that could not be calculated as gross usable acreage. The only thing it noted with regard to floodplain, floodway was floodway that could not be used. So with that noted, floodplain, other areas that, open space areas, things like that could be used for calculation of density or gross usable acreage, which is used during the density calculations.
That's all I've got.
Mr. Carl?
Okay, question for Raj. Hey, first of all, thank you for all of your hard work on this. I know you've been listening to a lot of the concerns and the residents and, I think you've taken a lot of steps to address a lot of concerns and issues, so thank you for all of that. A few questions on your proposal. A few questions on your proposal. So I understand with the age-restricted homes, you'll have front-facing garages. But with the traditional homes, are you still proposing front-facing garages?
So what I didn't do a very good job of clarifying, in our initial proposal, we were asking for some consideration on that. For example, we could do forward-facing garages if they were 20 feet behind the front facade of the house, which basically means you'd have kind of room for your suburban through a porch chair or park through a porch chair. And then the garages, you know, would appear. Kind of, if that ends up being something the council does not want to discuss, what I was proposing is that maybe the only condition that we would be requesting is that three-car condition that we talked about in the slides for our three-car garages would be limited to one in that J-swing configuration. Other than that, we would comply.
So two J-swing, one would...
Yes, sir, it would be limited to... Only in a three-car garage condition, only one could face forward. So it would prevent one facing forward and one in J-swing. It would have to take... the condition would be only for three-car garages would that condition be allowed if one of the three could face forward. Exactly what we were showing up there, but we had to put some pumbers around it so you wouldn't end up with one enough.
Right, okay. Now, also, for your traditional homes, you have a wide variety of... Actually, just a wide range of 1 acre to .25 acres, it looks like.
Right.
Do you know yet how many quarter-acre lots you would be looking at? Has that been... as you've designed this, do you know how many that you'd be...
We haven't specified. We would be certainly agreeable coming up with some distribution to make sure you didn't end up with all of the smallest category on the chart. If it made sense to have some distribution to make sure... Having a distribution, we could certainly discuss that. I don't really have anything proposed on that, but we would certainly work through that.
Right. Would you consider making the quarter-acre lots larger? Now, understanding that, you know, acre lots, if you're making something larger, you're going to be shrinking something else. But, you know, is there a kind of leeway to maybe increase the acre lot... or sorry, the quarter-acre lots? You know, increase that, that's often small.
Can we flip back to my presentation? I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
Let's talk about 11,600 square foot lots.
Dr. Lael? Right, yes, correct. You throw 11,000... Go ahead and go ahead and add that number up. Correct. 11,600 square foot lots, which is, according to my calculations, .26 acres.
Let me see if I can get a slide here. We're certainly open for discussion. We've really done... we feel like we've kind of moved in. In order to do the 1-acre lots, there's just a lot of push and pull in this particular situation. I don't know if you had something in mind, if you're certainly taking any consideration. We don't take these decisions, you know, lightly because a lot size then relates to a home size. And we just have to make sure that we're really agreeing to something that we think is marketable.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Clark, I don't know if you had suggestions in or if you were thinking...
So in that, I'm thinking maybe decrease some of the acre lots. Take some of that from the acre, maybe 1.9 acres, and using that to make some of these quarter acres larger.
Go back to you.
Yeah, I think we could... I could think we could consider that as a kind of push-pull. If that's the request, I think we can certainly look at that.
And Brian, I got a follow-up question to that. You're talking about doing things as long as they're marketable.
Yes, sir.
Age-restricted housing. I know that we've said that we wanted in our comprehensive plan. The types of homes that you're looking to build, the size that you're looking to build them, the builders you're looking to use, is that something marketable in this area? Is that something... and furthermore, let's say you think it's marketable and all of a sudden it turns out not to be. If you still can stick by that age restriction on those homes...
We have a choice. It would be restricted at that point. The zoning would have restricted it to do that. We certainly think there's a market for it. We wouldn't have invested the time and effort. Mr. Hui, Emma Bryan, sure that... We have a representative from Tatum Morrison, who we anticipate being that active adult developer and home builder in that market. If you want to hear from him, if you're ready, I would be happy to talk. But absolutely, if we think there's a market for it, we really wouldn't present... I probably didn't say it clearly, but all three options, we do believe are marketable deals that would work for our plan, for our economics, fit, we think, within the culture of our company, something we'd be proud of. So really, yes, absolutely. Either the hybrid model or a fully active adult, we do believe is marketable. Probably needed. I mean, we could go through the whole study. We ended up doing a very comprehensive study, but just if you think around the metroplex, really gaping hole for that particular product on the east side of Dallas, really all the way to the south of Dallas, is really a giant piece of the pie that really doesn't offer this to what we think is underserved or unserved market.
Thank you.
Now, one more question. You've just mentioned one of the builders that you're looking at for the age-restricted active adult community. And I think you've covered some of this before in your previous presentation and in discussions. What types of... you know, how can we make sure we're getting high-quality builders? You know, there's a concern for track homes. I don't think we're on track homes.
I think they're probably...
Is there... right. Are there... where are your plans to make sure that Sunnyvale homes are built are unique and high-value?
Sure. Maybe a couple answers to that. Some of it falls into that you can count on and take it to the bank. And the other is just feel about who you're doing business with in terms of Hillwood and who we do business with. That's a soft answer that you can't take to the bank. But we obviously are well-heeled, well-respected developer. We only do business with builders like-minded. Lori would tell you to look to the documents. And that's that development agreement we spoke to. So the development agreement speaks to material types. And the things that you can't control now, so says the state legislature, in terms of material types and quality. That'll be your document to rely on. You obviously have other requirements within your own code that speak to other requirements. We've actually, in our PD, suggested even higher standards that are already in your code, that would be in our zoning. And we would... it would run with the land, and you would always be able to enforce that on any builder. So that's really what you really need to look to. It's a documentation. But some of it is a little bit of trust, a little bit of trust that you're doing business with people who are high-quality developers, you know, and builders. But if you look to the... from a legal perspective, what can you hold a developer to, or a builder, is a good question. It'll be these documents that we're agreeing to that are well above your current standards, that most of the builders, not all the builders. In fact, I guess you have a couple of PDs in town. I don't know if they speak to upgraded standards for the housing. We're proposing that we do, that we have rules in our zoning in the development agreement that hold us to those standards.
Right. Okay. Okay, final question. Now, you've dropped the original plan was to have 626 homes. Now you're moving to 438. Is this changing the amenities that you're planning for these?
Depends on which option we're talking about. It does, it does, a little bit. There's a little bit less trail system. As you kind of see my chart that I put up here, there's a little bit less trail. Obviously, if you take away 30% of the lots and homes to be built, something has got to give in the program. We're trying to keep what we think is the most important elements, and that is kind of parts of the trails and amenities throughout the trail system. The private amenity will be downscaled to some degree. We're not sure what it will be at this point. But it certainly is maybe not what it would be with 626 lots. On the active adult side, it's an absolutely fundamental requirement to be able to market at the price point we're talking about is it has to have a high-quality amenity center. So it absolutely will. And either the hybrid plan or the entire age-restricted, it will absolutely be similar in quality to what we saw in our workshops. So yes.
Right, okay. And for the hybrid, would you be looking at, I think before you talk about having two different community centers, rec centers, whatever the terms are where you know. Are you now changing that to one, maybe it's a shared? Or is that... have you thought that far?
No, I think the active adult, just fundamentally based on that business and the expectations of that buyer who's spending that kind of money in the active adult community, it'll be private. That amenity center within the active adult community will be private and not share. We've discussed some ideas on the location. If it ends up being this way, where we end up with 300 active adults in really a pretty small program of 138 traditional, we've talked about maybe able to leveraging the same facility, maybe some... most of it really private to the active adults, or maybe some component usable for the rest of the residents. That's a private amenity, just to kind of make the best use of now one facility. You just can't do the same level of amenity based on the scale of it largely at 138 lots. So certainly, the intent would be to create a very special place, probably a trailhead and some other activities at certain locations. But really spend the time and effort of the planning and programming and your amenity dollar really focused on the trail system than that experience in parks.
Thank you. Is it offensive?
Thank you, Dan, for your team and the time you spent working with our residents and with our staff. There's a lot that's gone. Just a couple of questions. Just want to clarify, on your preserved tree canopy under the previously submitted plan, I'm assuming that 90 is acre?
Everything is...
Just want to make sure of that.
Yes, sir, that's a 90. Everything's acreage, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay. And you mentioned that on the 1-acre lots, you had some flexibility on the builders and allowing some custom home builders to come in. I believe that's what you said. So would you... the plan would be as a developer to maybe have some of those lots for sale for individual builders rather than what you would... How would that...
Yeah, maybe. It's important that any lot, any home built within the community is of quality that, you know, that we would approve. The idea of some of those, just say they're 15 or 20 1-acre lots, to be able to honor, you know, what we propose. The idea that there's one or two, what we might consider custom builders or people that just don't do the volume of some other builders. They come in and they build on some of those. Yeah, I can see that happening if a particular buyer wanted to come in and we pre-approved both the architecture and the quality of the builder. I could see that potentially happening in those 1-acre lots.
I know we have that happen sometimes here. And I know that there is a demand for it.
Right.
You could sell 1-acre lots to your own custom builder. So I just want to clarify.
That wouldn't be the core program for all 438 lots. I could see that being a program or allow for the 438 lots, or, sorry, for the 1-acre lots around the edges.
Thank you, Brian.
Right, I just wanted, maybe staff and Brian, to conform a few things. I think I heard it right, but I just confirm it. The amenities we talked about, trades, everything is accessible for the public, right? Not just that was...
It will be built, maintained by the community, but accessible to the public.
Accessible to the public. And you mentioned to Mr. Clark that you're often do increasing the small size, 11,600 to a larger. That's your option one?
Yes, sir.
The lower size is 11,600. And you said you were often to increase in that now, the larger size. Did you say that, or you didn't say that?
No, I absolutely said that we would certainly be open to consider that. This is, again, a bit of a push-pull, so let's see where everything else ends up. Yeah, the idea that that's not the absolute. There's nothing specifically magic about that particular aspect. Again, except for trying to produce a particular...
Trying to get in small lots, trying to get bigger lots. That's really what kind of... And Mitchell improvement, and there was lots of complaints about safety and concern from citizens about Mitchell. Your intent behind offsetting by 500 feet?
Yes, sir.
And that's really 500 feet is to try to, not necessarily 100% element because people can drive anywhere they want, but just trying to minimize people coming from a liberal straight road. Is that...
Correct.
Question for staff. So, you know, we have said that from townies to the... So in the future, when townies expand, so if the house starts building, how do we make sure that... Do we have a process to make sure that the future expansion is seen in account?
Yes. During the development process, town staff will look at what dedications are needed during the plating. And then those property lines and those dedications will be requested of the developer. And then from there, they'll develop their proposed development from those new property lines whenever they platen. But it'll be dedicated during the plating process, whatever right-of-way we need.
Let me qualify that. Chapter 212 of the local government codes requires that whatever is dedicated is proportional to the development that's being proposed. So to the extent that the widening accommodates traffic from other areas, that would not be automatically dedicated as a part of the plating process. I believe Hillwood has indicated they will dedicate it. And rest assured that we'll be signing a waiver regarding the proportionality requirement for that. I'm sure Misty would expect that. So with any other development, I can't tell you that you would get all of that right-of-way.
My understanding, just to kind of follow that point, is you're exactly right. You know, Brendan, as far as us being an obstacle to achieve the ultimate right-of-way needed, but just as a point, when townies was built originally and the home set was built, there were really no or very little right-of-way taken. Sort of not here to point fingers, but that probably maybe was an error. The result is, it all has to almost be taken from the Lupton property. So as Brendan mentioned, there are rights that property owners have to prevent this situation. Obviously, if we go forward and commit to these agreements, you'll certainly have assurances that we would never take any legal action or protest or do anything for that. That would be something that we would work with the town on. But it's an unfortunate situation, really, for the Lupton family that they're really having to absorb the entire right-of-way expansion.
One last question for you. Coming back to school. The... their intent was, I guess their estimate was 615 homes on a land of 800 acres. I don't know what's the total of the properties.
Mr. Lupton is here. What's the total acreage of your total property?
About 800.
Probably 800.
So roughly 453 acres remaining. And our school, pardon. They made this plan in 2016. I think their planning's for 10 years, is that the 10-year planning? Do you know any commitment or any expectation of what's going to be planned? When is the next phase going to develop? Maybe it's not a fair question to you, maybe it's a question to Lupton. In other words, I want to make sure that schools, in flex of students, some are, at least they are an opportunity to plan for it. So could they plan 10 years, 3 years back for 10-year planning?
Good question. I've mentioned this maybe to some people along the way. We think it's maybe an important component that we've built into our agreement with the Lupton family. And that's, we didn't want to bring a lot of absorption or product to the market at one time. So the family has agreed to restrict the development for the rest of the property for a period of several years so that never, you never have that condition. So the added benefit, of course, is the school district. They never have to consider the fact that the entire 800 acres is being developed at one time. It'll be kind of a property we develop might be Phase 1. And then after that period of years passes, then Phase 2 would be eligible to be developed.
I remember at least in your, one of your previous ones, that might have changed. You said your expectation is this will be developed for 80 years. I don't know if that number's still good or...
You know, we'll probably have to rethink, I guess, the whole business plan on the duration of it now that we're really at, you know, larger lots and higher price points. So it will certainly slow down from our previously proposed plan as far as absorption. Of course, we had more lots in our previous... Of course, we had more lots in our previous plan too, so we'll have to go through and kind of calculate the idea of doing 50 home sales a year, 50 to 60 wouldn't surprise me. So that probably takes you maybe to that eight-year period or six-year period. It may depend on which option that we select. The all traditional plan certainly goes slower than an active adult component being built into the Leutton plan.
Do you have, do you have, are you planning to have some sort of agreement from the property on, with respect to the remaining 453 acres as far as timing of development for that?
We have an agreement in place between us, yes, sir.
You care to say that, or that's?
No, I don't mind, I don't think it's a problem either. It's a seven-year period, a three-year period to withhold development for residential for the western side.
From the get-go or from the time it's finished, the 542 is finished?
From the time we start the development, so really immediate, I think it's actually upon closing, the idea was to give us the time to be able to develop without a competitive neighbor next door. So that seven-year period is what we're creating, which really lines up, I guess, with maybe the math you were working on before. We should be largely done, or close to done, by the time that, that seven-year period.
So I guess maybe this part of the math is 2016 is when the school made the 10-year plan, make it 10 more, seven more years to make it roughly 10, yeah, I guess that would give them the time to make the next plan, I guess, that may work out better.
Yeah, it might, I guess I would argue, I think Mr. Superintendent's letter kind of substantiated that there's plenty of capacity for what we're talking about and doing right now, and certainly in then some. I think the constraint would really be on the remaining part of the property to say there's only so many homes, if every home is a traditional home, there's only so many more homes that could fit under that 615 home limit. We're just absorbing 438 of the 615, and so I take, in my conversation with the superintendent, there's plenty of capacity for this. You may be constrained on the rest of the property unless another study is done, or if a product or a home is built that's not producing the point of children per, students per house.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, listen up, Ms. Egan.
And I'll echo what Member Finn said, thank you, you've worked hard getting here. I think we still have some more work to do, but you've made some, in my opinion, some big steps. Three quick questions, hopefully. One, are you planning on providing any fire station or emergency services, dedicating some land for that purpose within the?
No, sir, we, there's no suitable spot on the property or on any part of the property apparently that is suitable for progress.
Second thing is, is architectural redundancy, and I like the drawings that you've got here, but one of the things that makes, in my opinion, makes Barnes Bridge, or not Barnes Bridge, just Barnes Bridge, but Sunnyvale unique, is architectural redundancy. I'm sure there are some areas in the Sunny Creek area, maybe in Homestead where there is some, but I think our real objective is, after we see it now, is that we would like to see a little more redundancy. And I know there's limitations within specific builders that you want to work with, that there are only going to have five or six different things, and they flip them over and they might end up with eight or nine. Is there any way we could broaden that scope that you could see that would, because there's a lot of symmetry, even though you do have some rolling character to what's going on as a result of the way the terrain of the property is, but is there any way that we could look at providing for more architectural diversification? That tends to lend itself, and it's well driven up and down Barnes Bridge, there are not any two houses that look like there, even including the old green addition, which is up at the west end. Is there any way that we can, or have, can you work with your architect or the builder work with the architect, so that we can ensure the greatest amplitude in the amount of architectural diversity of any of these houses?
We would be, you know, happy to certainly look at it. The variance requested through the P E was a variance to your current, I'm not sure if I 100% remember it, but it was like a thousand feet between.
Ground.
Which certainly sets up more for your one acre and multiple acre, just the math just doesn't work when you're talking about a community.
When you get smaller.
Likely, when you get smaller, yes. But we'll go back and look, and it may just be a function of which plan we end up with, which option, because that tells us then what lot sizes we're dealing with. So be happy to go back and look at certainly what we proposed, which was a little more dense plan relative to your ordinance, and see if we can work on the redundancy standards.
Good, thank you, Brian. And final question is, we talked about, I think, our first meeting, I know we talked about it even more, I made some points about it in our second meeting, first and second meeting, and that is, this is a seven-year window that you're looking at, and we've had long-term projects that have been put together in the town before, that went belly up primarily across the 2008 fall market. How, have you thought more about how you're going to prevent us? The bottom line and all that is that that developer, Cherry Pickport, was easy to build first because that gets cash flow. But he sold it in multiple phases, he had multiple investors in phases, when he went belly up, then now all of a sudden we've got the harder parts that need to be developed. Meanwhile, things within the town changed in terms of life safety code, and that caused some real heartache and headache. And now streets were going to be going with headlights, as an example, streets were now possibly going to be run where headlights are going to be going into the front of a house that had been there for five years, and when that person bought that house, that street wasn't going to be going into the front of it. There are things like that that are, you know, if we all had that crystal ball, we would know how to design this stuff, but we don't. So the question that was posed to you the first couple of times was, what mechanisms will you have in place or follow through with that minimizes that scenario possibly coming up, again, the scenario we don't know about?
Yes, sir.
You sort of, you sort of talking about?
No, I don't remember the conversation.
Mr. Clark, before you answer, Mayor, I'm having a difficult time hearing, because I've got this and then I've got this, and I'm trying to take notes, and so to the extent that we can hold off on comments in the audience, it would be very helpful for me.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I think we certainly understand the point, that it was having that crystal ball to guarantee there's no downturn here as diligent and detailed a planner, developer, as there is in the market, just recognize that we are the ones most at risk, I mean, at least financially, we are the ones most at risk, and we take very careful steps along the way to make sure that we're protecting our investment, but also doing the right thing for our homeowners. We can't afford to think, you know, short-term, it just doesn't work, because we don't do, you know, 100 lots and then it would done, it's 100 lots and 100 lots and 100 lots, all of them in the same period. So we really have to think about long-term, not only to protect, you know, our investment, but really to protect, you know, the resident and the community members.
Is this going to be a single investment development, or are you going to have multiple developments similar to what the previous developer did that kind of got us into that? Yes.
Hillwood is a privately owned company by the Perro company, so it's an investment I.
You could pretty much build it if you wanted to and live out there by yourself.
It's a beautiful place. Yeah, this is, it's a Hillwood asset with our investment money on it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Egan.
Mayor, can I request that we stop our dialogue here? We're losing public real quickly, and I would like to hear from the public. So we'll have plenty of time for us to dialogue with the developers. I don't know if there'll be any more public workshops, I hope there are, but we're losing public pretty quick, and I'd like to hear from some of them. So I'm asking that maybe we can turn the hours, maybe we can hold ours for a few minutes and let's hear from the public, and then we'll come back if we want to.
So let me, since we have an agenda, let me quickly check with the council. Are you guys, are you all done with your question for now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to item number five, public comments, again, if you have comments to make, comments to make, please fill this form in. I'm going to invite Mr. Garrison, Irving.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Are you guys in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Two twenty-four, Bonfro.
Yes, sir, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, members of the P and Z, fellow residents, thank you for your time. I appreciate Hillwood's changes to their original proposal, however, I believe their proposals are still too far from the current zoning, with very little to gain, for this town and everything to lose. Ryan Karlock just said their three options are consistent with current SF2 zoning. This is only true with respect to overall density. However, SF2 zoning, per the U D O, calls for a minimum lot size of one acre. All of Hillwood's options have a max lot size, if you take away the one acre lots where there are a few of them, the remaining have a lot size of .344 acres or a third of an acre for their traditional homes, and 0.209 acres or a fifth of an acre for age restricted homes, not even close to the one acre. Hillwood's presentation for a development under the current zoning is nothing more than a scare tactic. Ryan claimed 438 total acre, total lots, however, this is not correct. The tract is 547 acres with 118 acres in the floodway. That leaves, I'm not a mathematician, but 429 acres with setbacks, utilities and roads. What is a reasonable guess for a true amount of one acre lot homes that could fit in this tract, and who would really want to live there? It's not marketable. So my argument is it's, no one would actually build out to that current zoning. Ryan even told me himself that Hillwood's not interested in doing that. This portion of the presentation was misleading and unrealistic. As for the impacts to the school, do you all believe it's prudent to use a study that's almost four years old, even if it was intended for 10 years? Has this town not changed drastically in that time period? I believe we need to do a study. Mrs., what about the remaining 253 acres of the Leutton tract? Will the town entertain similar proposals if they have some trails? Seven years isn't too long. What about the roughly 80 acres just to the west of this track? I understand entertaining deviations from the U D O for a P D, however, if you remove the age restricting portion, arguably the only contribution to our town's comprehensive plan, why would the town grant any exemptions or deviations from standard zoning? What does the town leadership believe this P D will give our town? Do the pros even come close to outweighing the cons? I think not. The town has no obligation to grant this or any P D. In closing, I'd like to give a quote from Ross Perro Senior, "The most successful people in the world aren't usually the brightest, they're the ones who persevered." Residents of Sunnyvale, this process may start to wear us down over time.
Time.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Going to invite Kevin Hendrickson, 339 Townies Boulevard. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Kevin Hendrickson, as you said, 339 Townies Boulevard. I am on one of the estate homes that backs up to this particular property. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for giving us a few minutes to come here to talk. I know this is a difficult job, City Council, I know you've been elected in this position, thank you for standing up and doing that. Elections are not easy, and you were able to get it done. Thank y'all for making those hard decisions. P and Z, I've been in front of y'all a couple times, or one other times before, and I appreciate y'all's service and y'all's decisions at that time. I have decided today because I'm not well-prepared on the facts that's been put before us. I think numbers are interesting, they can be calculated in many ways, we've seen some of that today. I would not want to try to do that here without being a little more precise in that. Everybody's making their argument to support their position, and that's what we do in America, and so I appreciate that process. What I do want to leave you with today, because I know my time's about up, is simply this, I want you to think about between now and the next time we meet, I know we have P and Z coming up, and then in January, I believe there's a City Council meeting that's currently scheduled, and maybe there's some more work sessions between now and then that could be scheduled. But I want you to think about this, what are we? What is Sunnyvale? Is Sunnyvale special? Is there anybody in this room today that doesn't believe Sunnyvale is special? You can surely make an argument. You could go to Google Maps, you could draw circles at different radiuses. I challenge you, within 13, within 20, within 25 miles, find a place as unique as Sunnyvale is. Sunnyvale is special. It's very special. Let's not forget that as we're making these decisions. My question is, why are we rushing to maybe not be as special? I'm a realist, we're going to develop, wouldn't move here, I knew that. I understood the piece of property behind me, I knew it would probably be developed someday, okay? But I also knew what the current zoning was, and I made financial investments based upon the current zoning. I understand in America we have ways of changing our decisions, our forefathers, but the Constitution set that up for us, and we follow a simpler path. So I understand we can do that, but why? Our Constitution hasn't been changed often. P and Z meetings have made lots of changes through the years. I'm not talking about this one, I'm talking about across the nation. I just ask, point now and then, that you think about the decision and how special Sunnyvale, Texas is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good time, Ms. Egan, thank you for keeping time, like I said, it's three minutes. Mr. Anderson, Charles Anderson, 2821, Brookwood Forest Drive. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, I'll walk up to the podium. Welcome to everyone who's here, and thank you for welcoming us and giving us this information. I think you already been thanked for your time and service, and I know how much you make sitting up there, which is not that much. I think it's no secret, I was in favor of the previously submitted plan, I still think that's an okay plan, and I appreciate the information tonight. I will tell you, I'm opposed to the current zoning, I don't think it really gives us enough, I don't think it gives us anything special, as Mr. Hendrickson said. My wife and I like the three options a little better, even though there's a mile less trail because there's more canopy, those buffers are great, and I think that will add to the town to keep that and keep that feel that we have right now. I love the trails, I hope you will keep them open, to the extent there are trails, we're talking about maybe closing some, please keep those trails open. It's a great trail system that's proposed, it takes you down into the flood plain, which is really a great ecosystem to expose all the members of Sunnyvale too and students. And I would also say that probably of the three options, I think I like option two probably the best because it's not all age restricted, but I would say age restricted folks, I think, not only does it meet the comprehensive plan, I think they are someone who is, would add to the community, I think they're a treasure, I think they often have time to spend, whether it's tutoring students, sitting on boards and commissions, maybe even running for various elected positions here, not necessarily.
One-minute warning.
Of course. So at any rate, just wanted to share that with you, and good luck with this.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next one is Debraus, 339 Bonfro. Good evening, sir.
I'm sorry for being late, Your Honor.
No, no matter, thank you for the patience.
Y'all are working overtime, I'm not. I don't get paid for this, but I did want to bring, just get us back to basics, when, I guess, from a personal standpoint, my wife and I- We're about 10 acres, but we are bounded on three sides by dear old Tab Lupton that's now gone. His son has been by. Jim, I recognize you now. I truly believe that we need to stick to the town charter that was established when we moved out here over 30 years ago, and that was one acre minimum. Does that still hold true? One acre minimum homesite is the town charter of Sunnyvale. Has that changed?
He has some questions. It depends on the specific zoning, but SF2 zoning.
There is a town charter that exists, and I have it. And if it has changed or it's about to be changed, I don't want to be up here and be a filibuster like I witnessed here a moment ago, but I think we ought to put it to a ballot and vote to see what the residents of Sunnyvale would like to do. In other words, change the charter if it needs to be less than one acre. If it is one acre and it's in the town charter, we've got to live by it. You all committed to that, taking your choices. I've been here seeing many faces along here. Jim, I recognize with old Ralph Hall, that being a friend of mine, but...
One minute warning.
The proposal that I would make would be put it to a ballot and let the current residents vote. Whether it should be one acre minimum, if it is, let's hold to it. If we were sold on the basis of Sunnyvale being countrywide living, and I'd hate to see that changed, but we all got to agree, when money walks in, love goes out the window. And sooner or later, it seems it's sad to say that everything is reduced to dollars and cents, and I think that's a lot that's bearing right here, dollars and cents. But we still, you've got to be fair with the people that have been here. I hope that you'll share that with me before any decision is made. Thank you.
Three minutes.
One more time.
Next one.
Mr. Burrows, thank you for your comments. Let me state that, yes, many years ago, we did put into place one acre zoning. It's not in the town charter, but it is in some of our comprehensive plans. As you know, as a longtime resident, that due to litigation, we maintain base density generally of one acre, one unit per acre. But because of that litigation, we had to create not only a comprehensive plan, but new zoning ordinances and development guidelines in 1993 that were approved, actually while I was the mayor, worked on during that time, that provided alternatives to one acre zoning. And that's why we're here tonight. One of those properties, while it has one acre base zoning for our zoning ordinance and our land use map, a developer applicant has the opportunity to provide an alternative plan. That doesn't mean we have to accept the alternative plan, but we have to recognize the alternative plan and rule accordingly. And we're at that point now. If you go back to the first slide that he presented, he talked about what provisions are in our comprehensive plan that allows him, that gives him the opportunity to present an alternative plan that he believes meets the provisions of our comprehensive plan. So he's doing that. That doesn't mean we're going to approve it. He has the opportunity to present. We have the opportunity and responsibility as the leaders of this town to see what we're going to do, to approve it, disapprove it, amend it, alter it, whatever it is. We're not to that point yet, in my opinion. I'm not. So we're sticking with one acre zoning. That hasn't changed, but because of previous litigation, we've had to provide alternatives to that. And various properties throughout the town have a right to present alternative plans if they meet certain criterias, and he does. So that's where we are tonight. We've not gone away from one acre zoning, as he started at the very beginning, and he's on the screen right now. That is one acre zoning.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. I guess it was on that basis, because time is money for all of us, to prevent this happening again and again, and so that a mayor, other council people do not cave in to a later deal. That's where I would recommend that we amend our town charter to prevent anybody coming in, even with the proposal stating that you will not even consider a change that involves with a homesite on less than one acre. And if you amended it and it's in the charter, you will be bound to live by it, and you will be doing away with all of this late night meeting, this shawl and iron. I ought to be in bed.
Let me state a fact for you that probably most people don't know. Only 32% of the lots in Sunnyvale are one acre or larger. 310%. 68% of the lots in Sunnyvale are less than one acre. That's a factual number. 68% of the lots in Sunnyvale are less than one acre. Whose fault is that?
Sorry. I'm sorry. Thank God.
Whose fault is that? We voted you folks in, and they always said, don't go to anybody that doesn't vote into office. Go to them. Go to the horse's mouth, and that's what I'm doing here.
That's time.
Coming to the horse's mouth. If you can't amend it, or if you can't amend it, to avoid this even being brought up, we'd all be home in bed right now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Meanwhile, Robert White.
I guess I've sat here, I do know what a filibuster is. It's happening up, shamefully, but I hate to see where the sizzle is being sold, not to state. The homes are beautiful.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Robert White, 225 Bean Grove.
I am. Good work. Thank you for the amount of time. First, Hillwood mentioned in prior meetings that prior developments allowed the establishment of our own high school, but many of us are still struggling to find out how Sunnyvale's community benefits from this development. I haven't heard the answer to that question tonight or any of the prior meetings held on this matter. Why does the town feel compelled to compromise and negotiate? Hillwood may be a great developer, but I'm waiting for the answer on how the town benefits from the approach they take up. Second, the edging presentation tonight came off as a threat to induce agreement with Hillwood's proposed plan or face the consequences of something unsightly like driveway after driveway off Barnes Bridge. I'm concerned that Hillwood's approach has shifted from, well, you let Homestead and Stony Creek do this in prior meetings, to tonight's approach of, well, if you don't let us do this, here's what you'll have to deal with. Why are they presenting in this manner? Sell some what you can do for the community, not some fear inducing and very unlikely worst case scenario. I hope the council is wise enough to ignore such negotiation strategies in making their decisions. Third, I think the folks here should know that the town, even after our police department is up and running, does not have the authority to enforce deed restrictions. I worked for 11 years as a police officer in a community with multiple age restricted communities. I apologize for the personal anecdote, but my department frequently handled complaints for violations of the age restricted deed condition, and our hands were tied. If you're counting on HOAs to actively police this, that was never my experience, and I fear you may be mistaken. Finally, I understand that the charter prohibits this type of matter from being put to a public referendum, but I think it important to ensure that the wishes of the residents and best interests of the town are being satisfied. This development would profoundly impact the entire town, not only those who received the minimum required outreach months ago. As a personal point of reference, the revised proposal presented tonight provides an exit from the development directly into my backyard off of Town East, and not a single person from Hillwood or the town has knocked on my door or roused to my attention or my neighbors' doors with their attention about this. Tonight is the first we are alarmingly hearing of it. A number of us were puzzled at the last meeting when the board, prior to public comment and discussion amongst council members, as is required, announced that the Lupton matter would be tabled at the last town council meeting. This made a number of us feel marginalized and left out of the process, and this should be a community decision. As the council peers to view this as a negotiation, perhaps take whatever ends up as Hillwood's last best offer and let the residents opine and fold, as many of us feel that this process blocked out any resident who isn't able to spend several hours every weeks, every few weeks, to monitor this process in person. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. White. Ted Mace, 236 Mall Road, Mallard Drive. Ted Mace. Good evening, Mr. Mace.
Good evening. Something that was said, I didn't plan on speaking today, I really didn't, but something that was said just struck me wrong. And most people, I don't think, know about, I can't remember, House Bill 4325, or was it 40, the actual legal term for the, what we're allowed to prevent developers from building. It kind of goes in hand with everything that's been said with why the town previously was lower the lot sizes. You had the ability to control what was built. You were able to say, we want you to build this. You're going to adhere to this if you're going to get this. But when he said, we're giving, with this planned development, we're allowing you to get a state, we're allowing you, when it's really, we're allowing him. You're allowing him, not he's allowing us. And the only reason he's even saying allowing us is because of the House bill that was passed. If you stick with straight zoning, as Rashad pointed out, the costs, they're going to have to incur to do it to maintain the one acre. You're going to get a million dollar house. You're going to get a $750,000 house. We don't need to compromise. One of the people who just bought one of those houses on a one acre lot that's now coming back, if you keep building smaller homes, there's no appreciation in value for your existing townspeople. They're never going to be able to move up to the larger homes, and then larger homes are going to get saturated, and now those values decrease. You have to have an equilibrium of supply and demand, and this is just ludicrous for someone to come here and say, we're allowing you to have a state. So I really hope you consider and listen to those little, we're allowing, no, you allow him.
One minute warning.
Thank you, Mr. Mace. Let me invite Sam Funtella, 243 Barnes Bridge. Good evening, Mr. Funtella.
The first thing that I'm going to say is I am going to host a public forum outside of the public square to give the residents of this town an opportunity to speak this Sunday, free from the limitations of the time, because I think that our folks would like to dialogue with each other. That was an expectation that I think many had for this workshop, and it's not much of a dialogue. It's kind of challenging for us to really express our position. But I did want to point out some things. I wanted to talk about specifics. I know that Garrison had mentioned that there are 547 total acres. One of the things that I was not able to get clarity on, of course, we saw that the floodway is typically not calculated in the total calculation for homes built, if I understand that correctly. So what that means is if there are 118 acres in the floodway, that means that there are 249 developable acres plus 180 acres in the flood plain, which would mean, according to my calculations of the .8 density, they would only be able to build 344 homes. So what we're saying is we're allowing them to use the floodway as part of their calculation. That's the first thing that I want to mention. The second thing that I want to mention has to do with our UDO. I'm reading from our UDO, SF2 is defined as minimum lot size of one acre, minimum base density of .8. When you go to SF3, it's minimum lot size of one acre, maximum base density of one dwelling unit per gross acre. When you go to SF4, it says the minimum lot size of 24,000 square feet, the maximum base density of 1.4 dwelling units per gross acre. When you go to SF5, it says the minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet. So that chart is no longer up on these screens, but if you really are looking at our UDO, what Hillwood is proposing is actually something in the area of SF5 development. To go from SF2 to SF5, when we already have land that's been designated for such development, then I find it very difficult to grant a zoning change on this particular property when there's such a vast difference. To go from SF2 to 3, maybe, SF2 to SF4, as it was on the agenda, is very difficult to do, but really to go to SF5 is unconscionable, in my opinion. So I would like to suggest that we really count the cost and look at what benefit does this town receive as a result of granting this developer this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Funtella. Let me invite Lauren Becker here for Town East Boulevard. Good evening, Ms. Becker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, P and Z, Rashad, thank you, staff, thank you so much. I'll be very grateful. I mostly have a question for you. I understand under the development guidelines that if there's 20% opposition within 200 feet, land that's under consideration for a zoning change, then that would require a three-fourths vote by council regardless of the decision at P and Z level. Is that correct?
Correct.
My question now is, with the revised proposal, do we need to worry about resubmitting opposition forms before P and Z considers this, or, you know, to maintain that 20% opposition?
I would have to lean on Town.
I don't think it's a problem.
I would need to lean on Town Attorney. This would be a proposal that is less intense than what was initially proposed, so notification wouldn't necessarily be required, but whether or not that 20% was still applied would be a question I would have.
You would not need to resubmit your opposition?
Okay, thank you. Because I do think now with all the traffic going in and out of Town East Boulevard, that you will have more Town East residents interested in this, considering that this is about the same density as Homestead, and there are at least, off the top of my head, six streets that go in and out of Homestead off of two roads, and we're talking about two points of entrance and egress off of one road now, and that's very, of much interest to Towns. I don't have much time. I had a lot of notes, and people spoke very well on this. It's very difficult to speak our piece tonight, not knowing the specifics of individual property setbacks, repetition of front elevations, street widths, and those sorts of things. And the reason that those are of such a consideration to us is because this is a tract home development proposal. The definition of a tract home is a dwelling that has a similar style and floor plan to those of other houses in the development. If you approve this, you're approving a tract home development.
One minute warning.
Hillwood just happens to be a developer who could put lipstick on it. Hillwood just happens to be a developer who could put lipstick on it. A couple of other things, I think we're missing the point on the school impact issue. Like with other future zoning for land remaining to be developed, as part of the Planning Committee for the School District, most recent bond, we took into account existing future zoning. This zoning decision has implications far beyond the left-in development. So to start talking just specifically about rooftops and how many rooftops we have left and whether the school can accommodate them is fine, but changing the zoning for this property has implications for school planning purposes for what we relied upon for future development of other property in Sunnyvale. The last thing is, Mr. Wade spoke on this, and it's the first thing that we heard tonight, the fact that staff spent 15 minutes talking about flood issues and reclaiming floodplain through FEMA, when we already have millions of dollars of flood remediation because of existing PDs should be extremely concerning to us. I'm not sure what we learned. And the other thing is, Mr. Egan spoke on this, we've been burned in the past by complex PDs with multiple densities. What makes us think that this will be any different? We're dealing with one of the wealthiest property developers in the state who will have the best land use attorneys to negotiate against, or with us for purposes of establishing a PD. I'll save my other substantive comments after we actually see what the official proposal looks like before P&amp;Z. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Next is Robert Bruce, 249 Barnes Bridge. Is Robert Bruce here?
Mary, yeah, the lead.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Anastasia Benson, 500 Robinsons. Good evening, Ms. Benson.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Anastasia Benson, and I moved to Sunnyvale in December 2018. I'm sorry for my emotional about this, because I moved here with my growing family for a reason. I loved the idea of this town. I grew up in a very small town, and I saw it could become a completely different town in a matter of years because of the exact same development that happened. I am in agreement with all of the previous speakers regarding their opposition to the plan, but I'd like to point out another point. I appreciate that Hillwood is trying to show how there would be a favorable alternative to the Sunnyvale Comprehensive Plan in 2017 with an age-restricted community and less than one acre lots. These proposed age-restricted homes, per our Hillwood representative, will be a much higher price point than the average home in our current community. This goes against Comprehensive Plan. Age 45 to 59 was the largest demographic of our community in the 2017 plan. This community, per the plan, on page 25, if anyone needs to look, intended to have an age-restricted community to provide life cycle housing choices. This will not do that. This will not allow current Sunnyvale residents to stay in Sunnyvale and be able to afford to be in Sunnyvale. Another concern is unless we'll be a community like Sun City, I'm going to age myself, but I will have two children in Sunnyvale High School when I'm 55, two. So unless we're going to age restricted like Sun City has in Georgetown, I would be able to live with my family in that community. This will impact our school district. Finally, just because the Town Council has allowed alternative plans to be approved, providing less than, I'm sorry, providing 60% of our homes to be less than one acre, does not mean we need to approve another 482 today. Our Town Council should listen to all of these people that have come today, who are all in opposition to this and disapprove this, and we should move on and enjoy the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Moving on to Mayor Buck, 225 Barnes Bridge Road. Good evening, Mayor Buck.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the commission. I'll be very brief. I'd just like to touch on the mechanics of a PD. You know, it exists to allow unique and innovative approaches to development in the town and conserve. To use a much maligned term as it's like, it's actually a quick quote-quote. It is intended for the developer to propose potential alternative ways of doing things, and in return, the town flattens its rules and requirements to achieve a balance there. I'm having some difficulty ascertaining the quantitative valuation of what the town gets out of this PD versus what the builder, developer gets from this PD. The PD itself is pretty straightforward. It's not complex, it's not complicated. What's being proposed, or at least most of it, what I've heard, involves getting large houses on small lots. That's neither innovative or unique. It's something that every developer tries to do every chance it gets. And I would simply ask that you, as a body, look at this. The last time I spoke, I used the word precedence and I got hammered for using that. This is not a legal precedence, but if you approve this development and somebody walks in the door tomorrow with virtually an identical development for another area of the town, are you going to approve it? And if not, on what basis are you going to deny it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Buck. Next one is Richard Spice and Lori Spice, 116 Barnes Bridge.
I think they said they did not want to speak.
But?
But they wanted to record their opposition.
That's right. That's correct. I do not wish to speak, but they're recording their opposition. Next one is Gay Temple, 204, 206 Barnes Bridge. It says, that's right, I do not wish to speak, but opposition. That's the last of the cards I have in my hand. Anyone else who would like to come and speak to the council? Would you please fill out a form for me and you can come back? Yes, ma'am, come on in, please.
I don't want to speak, but I have a form saying I'm opposed. Do you want those forms?
Ah, yes, ma'am.
Will you fill out a card and speak?
Ah, you can speak, then you can fill out a card after that, please.
David Gass, 112 Sunny. Been here a long time, 42 years, seen the town go from 900 people to what it is now. Was very proud of Jim Wade many years ago, when he coined the phrase, "country politician", because that's what Sunnyvale is. Excuse me, was. Jim and I had a little disagreement the other day on the phone, because I said, "That's gone." He said, "No, it's not." I said, "Yes, it is, and it's going faster and faster as we speak." Does Mr. Lupton have a right to develop this property? Absolutely. Does he have a, does he have a right to choke us to death with 800 cars on Town East Road, 400 and something houses? It's going to be 800 cars, people, especially if they don't go out on Barnes Bridge. Town East, it's not a very good road. I think that's kind of understood by everybody. I'm a little prejudiced because I think we should have larger lot sizes. I don't like tract homes. I agree 100% with Ms. Becker. This is going to be tract homes. Go over to our homes over here behind the school, because I have, I don't know if y'all have. They started 699,000, they have five house plans. They now have 11 homes and nine are identical. That's not even, that's against our ordinance system, but they're doing it, they all like the model. Go over there and look. Is this what we're going to have again? Just over and over, let these people come in and do this to us. Now, I'm going to save you some money with my last statement. My last statement is, y'all want to do a traffic count and see what happens on Town East? I'll tell you, 800 cars, it ain't going to look good. And the shape Town East is in right now, it's just going to get worse and worse and worse. Barnes Bridge, if they go Barnes Bridge, it'll be exactly the same thing. So we're just adding more and more and more onto our infrastructure. They think these houses bring in more tax money? Yeah, they do, but they eat up as much as they bring in because of the infrastructure. We have to have water, we have to have sewer, no telling what our sewer, most of our sewer bills are higher than our water bills nowadays. So the more we bring in on this Garland sewer line, what's going to happen then? I just think y'all need to really think this through, and I've had talks with a lot of y'all about it, some of you are in agreement with me and some of you aren't, but I just hope you think it through tonight. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Susan Guillermo. Mayor Fop, do you want to speak?
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Fop.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dr. P, P&amp;Z. I have an incredible appreciation and affection for the Lupton family and everything they meant to this community, and also a very high regard for Hillwood. They're a quality company, they do great things in the communities they're in. That said, I think you have no choice but to deny this application, and I heard that you do so at your earliest convenience to relieve the stress on yourselves, on the staff, on the applicant, and on this community. And I think the reasons are very simple. There's nothing innovative here, and there's nothing that creates enduring value. The 1993 Conference of Plan that Councilmember Wade referred to, and the subdivision ordinance that accompanied it, have been the guideposts of this community since they were adopted. They were upheld in 2000 in the revisions, 2017 in the revisions, and it may be hard for some people in this community to realize, we have never deviated significantly from those standards since 1993, and there's certainly no reason to do it now. I 100% support senior housing. If they're sincere intent to do so with this tract, I suggest it be brought in separately and you consider it separately. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Fop. I have one from Bill Crusella, I'm not sure if he wants to speak or not. No, okay, thank you.
Just to vote.
Yes, sir. Gloria Leving. Thank you, ma'am, I did not really, thank you. Yeah, the next one is Diane Turner, do not want to speak, in opposition. Catherine, do not want to speak, opposition. Mary Coon, do not wish to speak, to rezone, opposition to rezoning. Shelley Horwey, do not wish to speak, opposition. We do not need any more developments currently, etc. Deborah Franklin, do not wish to speak, in opposition. Casey Rowntree, in opposition, do not wish to speak. Good, our time is 9:44, I'm going to, we take 15 minutes break, which when these people get up and move their legs around, that'll be okay, it's a P&amp;Z? 9:44, get back, get back if you're not. Okay, my time is 10:06, I'm going to reconvene. I'm going to reconvene back into the planning and zoning, to the, if I've got Town Council meeting, please.
Uh, reopen the, the P&amp;Z meeting after intermission.
Council, the, the next item on the agenda, item is to, list some comments from Town Council on the planning and zoning condition. Council, I'm going to do, collect their planning and zoning talk, so I'm just going to make a comment here. There's a lot of work is put into this, into this project. Hillwood talked a lot and talked to a lot of citizens, they tried a lot to make this project work. By the end of the day, I represent the citizens, and the citizens fought in more ages. Majority do not see the value of this project. They talked about sticking with the SF2 in full spirit. I understand if you stick with the full spirit of SF2, that means you're destroying the value, the beauty of the, the property and the topography and the structure. But at the end of the day, I represent the town, I represent the people. So it's going to be hard for me to go against the citizen on this project. Brian and Hillwood asked for a direction. I really don't have a clear direction for him at this time, other than complying with the SF2 requirements stated. Again, that's just my position, but with that, I'm going to open, give back to the P&amp;Z Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I, sure, I don't speak for the whole P&amp;Z, but I will promise you that on Monday, when we hear this on our agenda, and we heard it on our previous agenda, that a proportion of citizens spoke, they voiced concerns, and honestly, I didn't hear anything new tonight at all. I did see different proposals from Hillwood, which I appreciate, and I know there's a lot of work going into this, but I think it's hard for us on Monday to vote again in our, our P&amp;Z meeting without some direction from the council, the citizens who spoke tonight again, once again. And I think it's only fair to not have them come back, meeting after meeting, town staff, and, so I think at some point, we need to reach a resolution that's important for the people.
So, I, so I think correctly on this, I thought the point of the discussion is, Hillwood asked for a direction of the three options. And just my thought is, I don't know any of the three options will work at this time.
So this is not and cannot be a vote on the zoning case. It is noticed for a hearing on Monday before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The only thing that would interrupt the process would be if the applicant withdrew the application. Other than that, I think the case has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report and then come back to the council for a vote. Okay, thanks.
Can the council table the, after we vote on the P&amp;Z, can the table again?
Yes, I mean, the council has the ability to handle the case procedurally as it sees fit.
And again, I may be way out here, but I would ask the council to not table it again if it's, goes to you.
Clarification, please. So, P&amp;Z denied the application. My understanding is that the council tabled the application. Present to that tabling was a request, I believe, to appeal. Council has not acted on that appeal, have we?
I believe the council sent it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for another recommendation.
Did we do that when we effectively tabled the application?
I believe that was a part of that motion. Rashad, do you recall?
That is correct. The applicant appealed to council, the denial of P&amp;Z, and at the council- The applicant appealed to council the denial of P and Z, and at the council meeting, council accepted the request to be tabled and established meetings for a review of revised application or revised proposal.
So we have effectively accepted the appeal by the fact that we tabled it and punted it back to P and Z.
You accepted the appeal, that was a part of the motion.
The appeal to table the request.
Okay, just clarifying, it doesn't look like, in my opinion, that we've acted on the appeal yet. We've tabled the consideration of the appeal, and we haven't acted on it.
The problem is this, the public, I'm concerned about procedural due process. The public is anticipating that the next action step would be a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So people may not have come tonight realizing that this was a work session, because they knew that that meeting was posted and established for next week. And so I can't recommend that the council take any final action tonight.
I'm not asking for any final action tonight, but I, as a council member, don't feel like that we have either approved or denied the application. We've tabled considerations such that we would act on the appeal. If we deny the appeal, or we deny the application, which is in effect what we would do perhaps, then we would require the applicant to come back with a substantially revised.
If you will give me a second, I will pull up the motion from the council meeting. But I believe the motion included the dates for the P and Z.
Yes, yes.
And if that, so if you'll just give me a second, I'll be happy to pull that up.
Brenda, are you gonna pull up your notes? Okay.
Do you have the minutes?
I do, but the only, it says councilmember Freeman made a motion to table item ten to a joint workshop with Planning and Zoning on December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, and then to be heard at the regular Town Council meeting on January twenty-seventh.
Right, so, let me just, if you'll just give me one second, I'll pull them up.
P and Z.
Sorry, my computer just came slow. Wish we could test during the break. So, the motion that I wrote down was a motion to table, send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, hold a joint work session on December eleventh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on December sixteenth, and the city council, or the Town Council meeting on January twenty-seventh.
That's what I recall, so, but I, that's what I recall, I don't say without your consent, lady.
Right. So it was a motion to table, but also a motion to send it back to P and Z.
Yeah, I think at least, the discussion was exchanged since the P and Z rejected it first, they want them to have an opportunity to view it before the council.
Right.
I have to respect the interpretation by the attorney, no doubt, but I'm reading the motion, and I know you are too. It says there was a motion made to table item ten to a joint workshop with P and Z, which we're here to not do it, and then to the regular Town Council meeting on January twenty-seventh. That didn't say that we were gonna have a P and Z vote, they were gonna take any action on it. It said we were gonna have a joint workshop, and then we were gonna send it back to the regular Town Council on January the twenty-seventh, so we could deal with the appeal. That's my interpretation, I could be wrong.
If I may, if I recall, there was a lot of discussion, and we actually selected a date for P and Z, it was, I mean, I know you weren't at that meeting, that was a meeting that you missed, but if you recall the discussion, it was, I believe it was that Brian said that he was gonna bring back alternatives, and the thought was out of respect for P and Z, they should have an option to hear those alternatives before you guys took further action. And so as part of the discussion, and, I mean, we got teased about it later, about how long it took to pick all those dates, and P and Z, going back to P and Z was one of the dates that was set as part of that motion process, so.
That's what I recall. Mr. Con, Con.
Can I say a few words?
Yes, sir.
It might help a little bit of this.
You worked some on that.
And I'm not even sure what the motion was, or what the technical aspect was to go forward. All we committed to, kinda quite practically, was go back, listen, see if we can revise, come up with an acceptable plan for the town. And that's what we think we have done in earnest. Spent a lot of time and energy, we're little big boys here, we spend our time where we choose to. You know, we've been around the town a long, long time now in discussion, so maybe for anyone to say we haven't listened certainly can be supported. The Lupton family have looked, I mean, looked, they've entertained many offers to sell their property over many years, a precious piece of property. They're fortunate that they don't have to sell for economic reasons, they've always waited for the right developer, doing the right thing with the land. We're very honored that this is the first time the Lupton family has ever entertained selling the property, at least as part of the farm. I have the great privilege of being at Mr. Lupton Senior's funeral this past week, and he mentioned the town of Sunnyvale. I bet in his obituary, and people who are eulogizing him, mentioned the town of Sunnyvale, and his passion for the town and the people, I'll bet twenty times, he loves this town, he loves this property. They held out till the right developer would really present the right treatment for the land, and that really is the plan we brought forward. And if you think about our plan versus kind of an alternative plan, our brand proposition really was, is there value? Does a community like this, I grew up in a small town too, I understand small town values, and I cherish my childhood, do you appreciate, do you cherish views, hundred-year-old trees, public open spaces, do you cherish those? How do you balance those relative to dividing the property, this town into acre or multiple acre lots, and putting all those, what we would consider treasures, what the Lupton family has always considered treasures, in people's backyards? Which is in effect what you end up with, no doubt. I clearly did a poor job of communicating the one acre scenario, the straight zoning scenario, in that it might have been interpreted as a threat. I, I thought I was clear, clearly I wasn't clear, I heard a few people make insinuations that that was a threat, or some sort of scare tactic. Clearly it wasn't, that really was intended to show any open-minded person that wants to look at what could be done. If you didn't want to rely on benevolence, Lee, of man, what could somebody do? It's certainly clear that that, the town wants one acre lots, it looks like, for sure. So we don't want to take town staff's time, we don't want to take the leadership's time, we don't want to take the town's time, we don't want to take our own time to spend on something that looks like it's clear that the people here, obviously, Mary certainly voiced that your, in their opinion, is being certainly of great value to be one acre lots. Even in spite of the request, or our plan, to preserve perpetuity, open spaces, trees, public spaces, which we hold dear, I know the Luptons do as well. So, I'll, what we want to do formally is, whatever the action is tonight or forward, we're gonna withdraw our application. It's clear that we're looking at the value of what we're trying to do with the property much differently than the town leadership in terms of what's, what's important, and that's fine, we, I guess we just look at things differently. I do see it as quite the shame, honestly, and the family will see it quite the shame, I guess the family will not let that happen, just because of, again, the pure passion for the property. So, long speech, but I thought I might say, other people reviewing minutes and notes and things from other meetings to figure out what we're gonna be doing procedurally, but it's clear we are looking at the value of how to treat the land much differently, and either we didn't do a good job of communicating the benefits of our plan, or something, but I just want to put that out there, so, unless there's any other further comment, we'll be withdrawing tonight or further. That's it.
Thank you, bye. So Brenda, procedure, you may be going there.
I'm assuming that Mr. Carlock will put that in writing to Rashad tomorrow, and he will notify the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the town can post on its website that the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting has been canceled because the application has been withdrawn. Were there other items on the P and Z agenda?
Yes.
Oh, there were, okay. So, P and Z will still be meeting, but this will not be on the agenda.
Okay, so as far as tonight's workshop is concerned, is it fair to say that this is going to go with the junk?
You know, unless there's opposition to letting Hillwood withdraw its application, I wouldn't think that there would be, but that's, my advice is always that that's in the city's purview. This is discuss, consider, and act upon providing final direction to Hillwood. I would think, under that posting, that you would be able to vote tonight to accept the withdrawal of the application. That's your direction at this point?
That's procedurally acceptable practice.
Yes.
Mr. Vayd, you have a comment, sir?
Yes, let me just clarify what I think I just heard. Brian, y'all are withdrawing your application, understand that, or it is very clear, that means that you're agreeing to submit the plan on your SF2 zoning?
No.
Maybe you're not, maybe you're withdrawn completely.
Anything else, Mr. Vayd? Council, any other discussions here? If not, I could ask Commissioner, please to adjourn the planning and zoning workshop,
I would adjourn the December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, P and Z meeting, the time is twenty-two, twenty-four. Thank you all for coming on.
The time is ten twenty-five, and we are adjourned the special workshop between planning and zoning and Town Council.
I need a motion, brother.
So, hold on one second. First, we need a motion by the Planning and Zoning Commission to adjourn, but agenda item number seven, prior to the P and Z adjourned, is discuss, consider, and act upon providing final direction to Hillwood. And if the council's final direction is that you're going to accept the withdrawal of the application, I believe that's appropriated this time.
Does that could be a motion?
Yes, it can.
Can I add a motion, council, to accept the intent of Hillwood to withdraw their application, maybe?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept Hillwood's withdrawal of their application.
What's made by Mr. Freeman to accept? Sorry? Second by Mr. Regan to accept the withdrawal of application from Hillwood. Everyone read the motion? All of them signify? All opposed, motion passed, it's through, Mr. Allen is out. We don't need that P and Z.
No, but we need a motion for P and Z to adjourn.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Could I have a motion, you got a second? I have a motion in a second, on paper. Mr. May, can you ask to adjourn the P and Z meeting?
Can I have a motion, can I have a motion to adjourn the workshop for tonight? What's made by Mr. Freeman, second by Clark to adjourn this workshop for December eleventh, and it's ten oh six, and the meeting is adjourned. I want to thank you, Mr. Allen, and members of P and Z.
Got it. You're fine, listen, you are fine.